Okay, we are on. And I would like to open the Georgetown Planning Board, October 10th, 2018 Planning Board meeting, Memorial Town Hall. We're on the third floor, just a few minutes after seven. We have minutes, some correspondence. We have two public hearings, 66 Parish Road and Healthy Farms Incorporated. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
We have one planning office item, Bailey Lane, OSRD, establishing authority. And with that, I would like to go to the minutes. If we could look for...
Motion.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll hear it, motion to approve the September 26th, 2018 Planning Board meeting minutes as written and amended this evening.
One second.
Okay, motion has been made, and it's been seconded to accept the meeting minutes of September 26th, 2018, as submitted or as amended. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All abstain.
You'll abstain.
Yep.
One abstain.
Don't you?
For... Oh, that's right, I wasn't even there. I got two abstain. I know they look pretty good. Let's see, we have no vouchers. Correspondence, Town of Rowley and Town of Newbury zoning. If there's anything about those anybody wanted to talk about, otherwise, we're going to go on to the first public hearing, which is 66 Parish Road. And if the applicant would come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Looking for a motion to open.
Take a motion, Mr. Chairman, to open the OSRD for 66 Parish Road.
Second. Motion has been made, and it's been seconded to open the public hearing for 66 Parish Road. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Right.
Aye. Okay, we are open, the public hearing. What I'd like to do is get a summary from John and send it to the applicant for a review of the changes made, not going over the whole project again, just the changes, I think. And I don't know if Larry's making it tonight or not.
Contrary to what I put in the comments report, Larry won't be able to be here today.
Okay.
He had a conflict with Town of Rowley. He has to be attendance there.
So then we'll go to the public for comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board. So with that, John, if you would, sir.
This evening, as I cited in the comments report for the meeting, you're basically trying to wrap things up as far as crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, of all of the outstanding items that remained from the last meeting. And in the staff report, if you do look on page two, item number one, have sub-sections A through F, and those were the outstanding items, and they vary from landscaping, drainage issues that were outstanding. The plans, the revised plans that we're looking at this evening do have the walkways and rear decks for each of the proposed lots now shown on each dwelling. Driveway light fixtures and the transformer locations are on the plans. And the proposed parking area for the open space trail, that's been reconfigured as a result of a ConCon meeting that occurred between this, our last meeting and this meeting. So you probably noticed that.
Yeah.
Little bit of an editorial comment, I really got carried away there. Municipal water issue has been resolved. And power, the power issue is resolved in that Georgetown Municipal Light Department will be providing power for this particular development. And I guess, you know, the main goal this evening is to go over all of these outstanding issues, possibly have the board agree to the modifications, and maybe last look at any minor modifications that board members may have, and then looking towards the next scheduled meeting to wrap things up possibly. And that's it.
So with that...
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Tom Construction is here this evening, and Scott Cameron, the project engineer, is also here. And we did make a full presentation at the September meeting, and at that time, we had not gone through plan revision. So what we presented to you at the last meeting was the original plan set as submitted. Since that time, as John has just mentioned, Scott and Larry Graham have communicated back and forth on a number of occasions. You have, I think, two comment sets back from Larry, the last one being pared down to just two items, I think. And I think what makes sense is for Scott to go through the plan revisions from the original set that you saw, how we addressed the various comments, and he can do that in as much detail or as little detail as you would like. And then we can proceed forward, as John said, to hopefully get into a position where we're ready for a vote at the next meeting. Just as a reminder, this is a 10-detached unit, single-family unit development as an OSRD plan, with about 35 and a half acres of good quality open space that will be conveyed to the town through the Conservation Commission. So with that, I think, not to belabor it, we'll go to Scott and walk him through the revisions.
I just do want to point out, in the handouts this evening, Larry Graham's second peer review report is here, two pages.
You emailed that, right?
Yes, that was emailed. Yeah, it does have a date of October 3rd. We actually received it Tuesday morning, the email, so never had the time to make it in the package.
Great.
I guess at your discretion, I can go through each plan change. There were other changes that were more technical in nature that we resolved with Mr. Graham. I don't necessarily see the need to go through those, but if you'd like me to, I can go through every point in the letter.
I think if Larry has signed off on those items that are technical, you don't need to go through those.
Okay.
And on the other ones, yes.
Okay. All right, why don't I start going through those? So I'm going to turn your attention to, this was a letter from our office on October 2nd, which we itemize, these are most of the planometric changes that, you know, are visible. And I'll walk through those, and there are a couple others I'll go through with you from comments at the last meeting. And to start off, there are two Graham letters. The October 3rd is really itemizing matters of utility connections, electric, water, et cetera. And there was a comment about the landscaping plan, which we did subsequent to this, provide some more information on. And these, there really wasn't much left here as far as technical or plan changes, it's more buttoning things up with town departments. And then the letter that he issued on October 9th, which was Tuesday, there were two comments on this, which, one was related to labeling a hydrant that we're showing on Larkin Road, and the other was showing a detail for the level spreader, which we had, we had written in the narrative but not put on the plan. So that was all that was left in that Tuesday letter from Graham, as far as what I would say are very minor technical comments. On sheet C4, the plan set, I'll start there. This is the site layout plan. So we adjusted each dwelling unit to show a walkway and a deck up the rear, so we added all of this to the plan on each unit. We also added on each one a driveway light fixture, which, as you imagine, just illuminate the driveway for each house. These would be residential size, you know, six-foot height, small sconces, just so you can see where each driveway is, no different than you'd see on any single-family home. We added transformers to the plan, these would be the locations where the power would be coming in and distributed to the dwellings, 1, 2, and 3. And we added, we adjusted the parking space, and we had met with Steve Potenski, who's the agent for the Conservation Commission, and his comment here really was to minimize the footprint of this. And this was also in keeping with Mr. Graham's comment about minimizing this. And yes, the space was back on the road, he had to center it between the two wetlands, there's a wetland here and a wetland here, and so that centered as best we could right between the two to keep it as far away from each wetland as possible. So we're still showing five parking spaces here, and they were back out. And there's a fieldstone wall on the frontage here, and just so people don't drive into the site, we proposed to take those fieldstones and put them at the ends of the parking spaces as a deterrent for vehicle barrier. And those could be easily moved if the town needed to get in with the backhoe for whatever maintenance in the future, they can just be slid out of the way, so it wouldn't be anything permanent, but it would deter anybody from driving in. Turning to sheet C5.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Are we nearly listening right now, or is it too good time to comment?
Yeah, let's go through, if you go through in an abbreviated fashion, yeah.
Yeah, this isn't long.
Then let's come back.
So this is the grading plan, not too many adjustments now on the set of plans we submitted just before the last meeting that we didn't discuss. One of the changes I had mentioned was coming was the detention pond in this area. So we initially had some underground tanks, it was kind of a combo of an above ground and a below ground. We simplified this, so it's all above ground, so just a shallow detention area here, and there's a single catch basin at this point, and we, just to conserve space, so we're not spread out too much, that was a change. This simplifies this considerably, and it's in keeping with the rest of the stormwater management, which is the rain gardens and kind of shallow lawn depressions, that'll be the characteristic of all the stormwater management throughout the site. While I'm here, too, although we did change the grading and the plantings for all the rain gardens to just be long and seeded, so no more plantings in them, keep these as maintenance-free as possible, and also they'll function as well as we can get them to function long-term. There were some minor adjustments to some of the downspout connections, getting these, the roof run out to the detention ponds, that was more of a technical request from Mr. Graham. And we also went out and excavated some additional hand augers to a depth of four feet or so with Mr. Graham, because he wanted to verify soil conditions and some areas in the site that we hadn't covered initially with the soil testing, and he was satisfied with that. From the planning profile drawing, sheet C6, we have updated the water connection. So our proposal is to come in from the Byfield Water District side of the project, this creates the least amount of disturbance to the roadway network, wetland systems, et cetera, and is an accessible point of connection for the water. This would be extended into the site down to here. Mr. Graham had also asked us to extend this out to Larkin Road. I personally am not a big fan of this, because it results in a 250-foot dead end that can result in water quality issues, because it's not flowing, so it's just going to accumulate sediment that's going to have to be flushed out each year. But he had asked us to put that in, and I think, you know, depending on what the water department wants us to do with that, you know, we can't extend that down, but again, our preference would be to keep it ending at the unit here, which would be the best for water quality. My understanding is, in some multiple conversations with the water department, you're making faces at me.
I'm not understanding how that would be the best for water quality. The dead end is then in front of the house, I'm sorry.
Let's just keep on your track.
We have had some conversations with both departments, there is no, we have not been told that there are any issues from either department with this proposal. We're still waiting on correspondence in that regard, but that's the proposal right now. There doesn't seem to be any interest to connect this through here, as far as there's minimal benefits, from what I'm being told, for both communities to do that connection. It just doesn't seem like it's worth it to do that, so that's off the table at the moment. The hydrant locations, we also went with the fire chief, went over the hydrant locations, those have been updated on the plan, as far as where he wants hydrants to be located. Mr. Graham had asked us to label the hydrant here, so we're adding a series of hydrants, those have been reviewed with the fire chief. And we're showing where the electric feed is going to come in with overhead wires from Georgetown, so that'll be a Georgetown extension of the electric system. There'll be a pole here, a pole here, and then from this point...
Oh, yeah, overhead.
Underground. Yeah, supposed to be overhead across the stream, across the wetlands, and then drop that underground, as it comes through the site, through this direction. And then this will feed back out to the transformers and then to the dwellings. On the landscape plan, this has been evolving considerably. We do have now, we're preparing to file with the Conservation Commission, we're going to be before them informally, give them an update. On the 18th, Durost Environmental has completed his maintenance plan, which will be part of this project, it's a very detailed plan, I'll summarize that for you. But this is relating mainly to all the work that would be in the Conservation Commission buffer zones, a riverfront area, so we clarified that on this plan. The dark green area here, this is going to be an invasive species management area. So this isn't come in and completely clear and grub it, this has come in and managed the invasive species, so they don't continue to take over and destroy the habitat here. Bittersweet, autumn olive, multi-floor roses, a lot of species in here, so this is a management area, not a complete, you know, clear cut and remove. That's intended to keep this under control, and that will help, you know, beautify the woods and hopefully start to bring it back to more of a native condition. The light green area here, this is more of a full restoration area, and this is in the riverfront to the stream, so this would be a full kind of clear and grub. So most of the plant species in here are invasive in nature. That would also include the fringe between the management area and the development footprint. This green strip here would be a restoration, and the goal there is to remove all the invasive plants, mostly in this area, it's autumn olive. Go back in any disturbed area, seed it with a wildflower mix, and that wildflower mix is intended to be for, it's supposed to be really helpful for bees, and I can show you a picture of some of those, but it's considered a bee wildflower mix, intended to promote that, as you know, or you might have read recently, bees are struggling, and so anything we can do to help out with them, and providing native flowers is a huge benefit. So this would have long-term maintenance, both areas would have long-term maintenance plans, those are all outlined in what would be going to the Conservation Commission, both short-term maintenance afterwards, because there's more regular trips to go in and make sure any small invasives that are starting to grow back in are pulled, and then long-term, the green color here would be mowed once annually, late November after your growing season, so it does the least amount of damage to any plants in there, and it keeps any woody vegetation or larger invasive species from growing back in. We also add on this plan a typical detail for plantings around the units, so there will be landscaping in front of each unit. And we did update, we added three trees here, this is a comment from Mr. Hoover on trying some screening between the street in this first home. These were close to white spruces. We removed the plantings and the rain gardens, as I mentioned, so that will just be long and seeded. And then we did add quantities to the trees on the table here, as far as where those will be planted around the site. And so there's a mix of red maples in more of the stormwater areas, and fringes of, in the swales and on the fringes of any of the stormwater areas, sugar maples in any of the more upland areas along the road, American hornbeam, which I believe is, it looks like a smaller type of peach tree, it's in that species, white pines, white spruces, and then service berry trees. So we've updated all that on this plan. And the Conservation Commission has also, or the agent has asked us to add markers that are going to delineate this area for anybody living here long-term, so there'll be small, probably cedar posts that mark the limit of these areas, so people maintain the property, you know, what's supposed to be maintained in mowed grass, and what is supposed to be the once annual let it grow areas in the property. I covered the meeting with the fire chief, the conservation agent. And, let's see, other couple of changes I did change, note 10, so this now references, instead of a town engineer, this references the Conservation Commission to review the road controls prior to construction, so that was updated. And there was a question about the strip of land along the frontage here and why that was added in. This was really, we had extra land to give, and through working with the commission, we added this in, most of it's wetland anyways, there was no reason to keep it as part of the development, so we included that strip, just as part of it, just extra land that we didn't need. Okay. So I think that covers most of the plan changes, and if there's anything else you noticed, or I can go over that with you too, but that's all the big stuff.
Is presenting the culvert crossing.
They will be.
Let's, yeah, if we can talk about the culvert crossing a little bit. The idea of the culvert crossing came about before I was involved in this project quite a while ago, and certainly before Scott was involved. And we heard at the last meeting some comments from some neighbors indicating that maybe recreating that crossing and opening up the street at that point is not what the neighborhood really, really wants to do. That culvert crossing is not something that benefits this project, it's not something that's needed for this project. It was something that was kind of evolved as part of the project, but I don't know that that's something that we really want to do at this point, given what we've heard, and perhaps is not what the neighborhood wants either. The, Scott's office has had communications with the fire department, and emergency services to this project will be coming from Newbury because of the proximity of the Newbury Fire Department. Whether that culvert crossing is fixed or not fixed, it will be coming from Newbury, because it's so much closer. So 911 response is going to be coming from Newbury. Water service is now coming from Newbury as well. So we wanted to propose to you tonight that we not undertake the culvert crossing, which the purpose of it would be to open up the road to create, which would create quite a bit of through traffic, from what we've heard from the neighbors, something they experienced in the past. Then the road was closed at that point, and they didn't have that traffic, and now opening it up again, and I think those folks are here tonight and can perhaps speak to that, would be something that would not be beneficial to the neighborhood, and is certainly not something that we need for this project.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I don't think so, I think that's it.
Okay. I think if we could take it to the public, if anybody from the public at this point has anything they want to say, just introduce yourself to the record, please.
Sure, Scott Edwards, and I'm Parish Road. I spoke at the last meeting, and I guess I can echo, what was it, what you just heard as far as traffic, you know, we, I've been there for 24 years now, and when that road was open, that, the road actually in front of this development was a dirt road at the time, and it was very rutted. We still got a lot of traffic from the highway, because that's the shortest way off of that exit of 95 into Georgetown. You know, again, the road's very narrow, very windy, it's, I measured it in a few of the curves, 18 feet in width, that was tree to tree, and, you know, no markings or anything like that. So, you know, I think it would create a, an unnecessary, you know, traffic problem in, for both sides of the bridge, really, for both Larkin and Parish Road. You know, what's interesting is that, I think, even, you know, Newbury's going to respond to this development first, but even if Georgetown were to just respond, they wouldn't go up North Street and up Jackman Street and down Parish Road. They'd go up North Street, Central Street into this development, that's the quickest way. So even if Georgetown is there to back up, I don't, you know, I don't believe that that's the way that they would come through anyway. So, yeah, that's, you know, it would, it's become quite a wildlife area down there. You know, the beavers have Parker River dammed up pretty good at the end of Wheeler Brook, and it's, you know, when I walked in, you were showing some of the, some of the wetlands there, and that pond that you were looking at used to be a stream when I moved there, and the beavers dammed that, and now it's a full-fledged pond. So that area at the end of Parish Road is starting to become like that, too. It's really started to, you know, widen out, and, you know, it's becoming a nice, a nice natural wildlife area to go in and, you know, put a new culvert in and pave it, you know, I'm not sure it's in the best interest of both towns. And the only other thing I had, I guess, is more not of a public comment, but I'm a consultant, actually, for the Georgetown Water Department, and they gave me this project as one of my projects, and I met with Byfield Water, and we discussed the project, and do we need a tie between the two? And we both kind of decided that it really doesn't serve either town, because we have a good tie with Byfield out on North Street, and our pressure differences...
Scott, I'm sorry, are you speaking for the water department right now?
Yeah, I just figured I'd...
Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Yes, for the water department, right. So, and I spoke with a gentleman that works with Scott, and met with him, met with Byfield Water, and I think the solution they've come up with is reasonable. You know, Byfield is right there, that doesn't really make sense to make that a tie point, it wouldn't have any advantage to either town. I guess the only thing I would say is if the culvert does end up going in, you know, it would be nice to have a sleeve put in, so in the future, future, you know, you could get under it. You know, I don't know if there's any options to, you know, put a smaller culvert in just for utilities. Working in the utility field for years, I, I'm not, you're going to have water from Newbury serving the site, but electric from Georgetown, that can cause an issue with the house fire, you know, because you've got crossing lines there. On the other side of the road is National Grid, and now you've got Georgetown Electric. And, you know, I've been involved with electric departments for 30-some years, it's, that can cause a problem, because you don't know who to call. Police are going to show up, fire are going to show up, they're going to call National Grid, because that's who serves Newbury. So, you know, you like to try to keep the water with the electric if possible. So the water makes sense serving from Byfield, so that's just kind of an editorial comment.
That's all.
So, thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, bring it back to the board for questions, and, Graham, you want to start?
I don't think so.
Harry?
Just, I noticed the parking area got truncated, and I'm less than pleased at the idea that people will be driving in and then backing out into the street. I'm still a little bit disappointed that there's no connection from the street into the development itself for vehicular emergency access. I think I'm the lone person on the board, don't worry about that, but I'm the lone person that cares about that, and I just, I have, I have this idea that that road, that driveway, excuse me, that access drive is longer than any subdivision roadway that we would permit without a major waiver. So I guess that sticks in my head. Really don't like the idea that before, the parking area was wide enough, large enough that a vehicle could pull in, do a three-point turn and drive out safely. Now, they don't have that option, according to this recent change. I don't like that, I'll be honest with you.
Change took place for what reason?
Multiple. One, Conservation Commission, we had our meeting with Steve, a couple of comments that came out of that. One, there's no way the commission will ever approve a road coming out. I can't speak for the commission, this is just what we were told, we said, we were told, do not do roadway coming out. Two, they're concerned about extending that parking area in, because it is a larger footprint of disturbance, and it can't be, you can't see it from the street, so there's a safety, well, for my perspective, a safety concern, that's my perspective. Reason I didn't have any issues with this backing out, and I think also Mr. Graham reviewed it, it is a low-traffic road at present. There's only one driveway near this area, so, and there's also no turnaround ability on this, so if you do pull down there, the only way you can turn around is backing into people's driveways. So... So by keeping it on the street there, you know, it provides that turnaround option if somebody does come down there, it's visible, it's not gonna look like a little dirt path that, you know, somebody might not want to pull into.
Is the site distance vertically fine?
No, no issues at all. It's straight and well, it's flat.
Straight, flat.
Yep.
Right. Harry?
That was just one thing. Parking lot, I, I too wanted to know more of the details about the bridge work that was being done. I wanted to know a great deal more about that. It doesn't sound like you have that on the table anymore.
Yes, Frank.
Interesting. And the only other thing is the electricity. I noticed that there's a fence now, and vinyl fence that separates the, the walking trail from the subdivision, the, the development. And as soon as you're in the development, all the electrical power goes underground, like is required in our subdivision regs. But on the parcel of land that is going to the town, that is being given to the town, we're installing overhead, and that just doesn't seem to ring, make any sense to me. It's good enough for the subdivision to have it underground, but, well, if you're giving the land away, you can dirty it up with some overhead power lines, it doesn't matter you're giving away anyway. Take the cheap route out and just throw it away. It's a throwaway for you anyway.
It's not, no, it's not a cheap way out. This is, this is actually what the Georgetown municipal aid asked us to do. It's one of maintenance. If you have power running under a river, that, you know, they can't really get to the conduits, this is the best way to make sure that they can get to those lines and maintain them.
I'm, I'm personally thinking, you have your water coming in from Newbury, you should have your electricity coming in, too. I don't think it's a good idea to have separation, personally. And just the aesthetics, if you're giving that parcel of land to the town, why are you gonna dirty it up with power lines going across it? But, that's just me. I never did see any areas that were identified as snow storage. I think I asked for that last time, but sort of fell off the table or something?
It didn't fall off the table. I had noted it. So, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting as well, this is, you know, showing snow storage areas, very typical on parking plan, where you don't want to obstruct parking spaces, obstruct site distances, other things of that nature. This is gonna be maintained like any other road is maintained. The plows are gonna go up it, they're gonna push the snow to the edges, and then they're gonna push the driveways out on each side. So designating a snow storage area, you know, I, I can show it on the plan, but.
Yeah, I was just looking at, I was looking at the contours and looking at it with that in mind, and I seemed to notice that the rain gardens were gonna get all the salt. And I didn't think that was good, but, I mean, it's not something that I have to maintain.
The, the rain gardens won't get salt because they're only picking up roof runoff. Any of the roadway runoff will melt into the road, the swales that run along the shoulders, which are there to collect anything coming off the road, sand and salt, that's your pretreatment, and then there's sediment for bays before they get to the larger infiltration or detention areas.
I'm thinking a good-sized snowstorm piles melt. Looked that way to me. I could be wrong. I'm sure, I'm sure you're right.
Yeah, de minimis amount, and it's gotta go over a long length of lawn to get to any of those areas, so it, it wouldn't, you know, which again, a common low-impact stormwater measure is a grass filter strip.
If it's liquid and not traveling over the snow forest. Right. Yeah. And again, just the details of the bridge work, because I think the bridge, sorry, the bridge should be open, it always was open, it should be, it should be the way it was. We've seen the Bailey Lane Bridge, neighbors came in, they loved the idea of living on a cul-de-sac, even though they didn't buy one. That's how it is. Everybody that has road shut-offs like that, they're in favor of it. In favor of keeping things connected, giving options open like that. I know it's not popular, but I at least want to be honest with you. And that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert?
To your last point, I live on West Street, and that bridge over the Parker River had failed, and we were more than happy to see that opened up. Because it, yes, absolutely, it gave us access to a bigger world. And I, I tend to agree with you, Harry, I'm not comfortable, and I under, and I understand and I sympathize with, with the residents, but the residents of this community are gonna be completely oriented away from Georgetown. They're gonna be paying taxes in Georgetown, and they're gonna be really residents of Newbury. I think this is gonna create issues. The, I, I was wondering about, also, are there no age limitations here, right? So there will be families probably, and school buses. Now, presumably, the school buses are not gonna enter this community, and they're gonna go up 95, go up to 95, to go down to Georgetown schools? Is it, would that, is that the scenario?
They would be residents of Georgetown, so I would assume that the children would go to school in Georgetown.
Right.
And provision would be made to get them there.
Would we have covenants that they have to go to private schools or something? Is that how it would work?
I'm sorry?
Would we have a covenant that the children would have to go to a private school?
I don't think you can do that.
I know it's a condominium, you can put covenants.
I don't think you can put that one in.
I wonder if you could, if you could make a deal with Troy.
If people want to go there, I'll take them.
Yeah, I wonder, or, you know, one of the, one of the schools up there, because it, there're gonna be small children going a long way up through, you know, up to Central Street.
By the way, I love the bees, the work on the bees, I think that's really, really good.
Bob, before you leave that point.
Yes.
I just wanna, Scott, you had mentioned that they wouldn't be coming, and maybe I misunderstood you, that, that people, that the police or whatnot would not be coming from Parish Road direction? They would be coming from, you said Central Street, and that means they'd be doing 95 coming in that way?
Probably.
Is that what you were thinking?
I, I, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna represent with police and fire, but.
Totally understand.
To access that road.
Yeah.
They would come up North Street to Central Street in that way. They're not gonna come, get off of North Street, up through Jackman, and then down Parish Road to get to this development. They're gonna take the quickest way, which would be right up North Street to Central.
What if Erie Four responded?
Erie Four, even, even.
We showed that on that.
More so, because they're on that, they're on the Byfield line.
Where does Central?
You know, so here's the development site right here.
Right.
Right? So with the cul, with the culvert being built, then you're traveling down this road and you have a direct connection.
Right. That's Jackman, right?
Right.
Yeah. Now, without the culvert being rebuilt, you're talking about going all the way up here and then making your way down.
Well, that's what the fire department chief, the fire chief said.
No.
I'm talking the other way.
You're talking this way, right?
You'd go, you'd go back over 95 to North Street.
Which is, and that's why I was wanting, wanting you to zoom out, because that's up here.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's the quickest way.
Hey, can I just?
If you do that, you drive by the Newbury Fire Department.
Right. Yeah, I think the service by Newbury Fire Department and police would make sense.
That's awful.
If I, I mean, and I'm very nervous, as Harry was saying, I would be very nervous about confusion between National Grid and the Georgetown Lighting Department. Who's, who's in charge? Who's in it? How about gas service?
Not doing gas service.
Wouldn't be doing gas.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can I just make a, kind of an editorial planning comment?
Sure.
In regard to this. Connecting roadways is all about fire safety, providing, you know, convenient access to more people. You know, the more through roadways you have, the easier it is to travel for the travelgoers within that roadway system. When you ever introduce, you know, a cul-de-sac situation, it's a cul-de-sac now, that used to be a throughway, you know, people do get used to having quieter neighborhoods, and, you know, it turns into something that's an advantage to quietness. To reintroduce the roadway connection, you know, from a planning perspective, it makes all the sense in the world for emergency services, it makes all the sense in the world. The inconvenience is for people that like to live on cul-de-sacs and, you know, to keep a cul-de-sac. So that's what we're dealing with. It's, it's planning, emergency services, connecting roadways, it creates a better roadway network for the community, you know, as opposed to keeping it closed, which serves the desires of people that like to live on cul-de-sacs, and people in this country do like to live on cul-de-sacs.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Nope, got that. Bob?
Uh, that's about it.
Tilly?
I would like more detail on that culvert. As I recall, and I'm just using my memory, I believe it was the Mother's Day horrific flooding that we had.
Yeah, I think so.
I think that was the downfall of that dam. And with that created all that erosion, the sand and everything that was on Larkin Road. It just washed it down. So if you're not gonna have any dam there, any culvert there, you're going to only increase on that happening over and over again. Without the, a good solid culvert, I could see it happening. Every, every rain we're gonna have, we're gonna have erosion on the street. And I think in the, in the winter particularly, you're gonna have ice form down there. I can see it being a hazard, and quite frankly, I don't think the fire chief in town understood that you were considering no culvert. I'd like to hear what he had to say about it. Is that correct? Did you tell the fire chief you were considering no culvert?
This, we haven't had that conversation directly.
No. Well, everything that he, he says in your questions, I'd like to see in writing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And I would like to see that in the water department as well. I understand where you're coming from, but I'm thinking of the environment. I'd like to know what the CONCOM has to say about it, and, and particularly with that culvert. I think, I mean, that's coming out of left field. We already, the board has already approved the, the concept plan with the culvert. Now you're coming in considering no culvert. Am I right with this OSRD? You have to stick to the concept?
It's significant.
Yeah, and this is significant.
Well, that's why, that's why we brought it up tonight, to get.
And I appreciate.
Pick your temperature on it to see if this is something, because we were hearing that maybe it's not something that the neighborhood wants, and it doesn't benefit this project, it's not something that we need for this project. So if it's not something that the neighborhood wants, let's talk about whether we want to do it, and maybe from a planning standpoint, you're gonna say, yeah, do it anyway. The Conservation Commission, by the way, has already issued an order of conditions to do the culvert work. So that's already been approved through the Conservation.
So you are gonna do it. I mean, I would like to know.
No, we got that, that, that probably two years ago, and the approval is still good for that work. So the Conservation Commission, just to your point, what did the Conservation Commission say about it? They've approved.
They've approved the culvert, yeah. I understood that.
Yes.
But did they realize that now you're considering no culvert? I would like their input as well. That's a serious change to me, it's significant, because, because so much is impacted to all these issues that we talked about.
Well, and we're happy to respond to that, but it may be from a planning standpoint that you say you want it, and I don't know, and if that's the case, then, then that's the case. But if it's something that you are willing to consider with this additional, if we get additional information, that's fine, too. If it's really not something that you want, then that's one of the reasons why we're here tonight, is to get some direction on that, because really, at the last meeting, that was the first time I had heard from neighborhood folks saying that they really didn't want it. And then when I look at the plan or the, a map of the area, I see, yeah, that does make quite a cut-through, quite a good cut-through that maybe the neighbors wouldn't want, but it's not something, it's not something we need, it's something as part of the proposal initially, and we can keep it as part of the proposal if that's what you want, but.
I'm curious to know hydrologically about that suing to the Parker River.
Okay, so, so the culvert is an issue now, and let's put that on the table, and let's move on with other issues.
All right. Well, as long as she understands that with, with this, you would need engineering plans, you would have to have more soil, that thing, you would, to not put a culvert back would be detail, very detailed for me to consider it.
So what's this plan, John?
That's, that's the plan. That's the plan itself.
Yeah, with the culvert.
With the culvert, yeah.
With the culvert, right. But if you're gonna take it, you're not gonna consider it, then you have to work on what.
Right, right, right.
Work around it.
Okay. As far as the parking for the open space, I would prefer you not have in the parking lot there. I, I would think that you could find a different place for it, because it's such a sensitive, critical area. I would prefer you have it in another place along this road, for my, for my own thinking. You know, in my mind, I would prefer it being the very, either you eliminate one of those houses at the very tip, put the parking there, if that's where you want it, but I would think you'd want to find another area for a parking area for the residents, because it's so close to the, to the, to the brook, the stream, the culvert, if it's there, if it's not there, whatever.
And you'll recall that parking lot, in that location, it was configured a little bit differently, but it was always in that location in the original OSRD concept plan. And that came about through much discussion with the conservation agent, who, with regard to the whole open space area, and giving the town 33 and a half acres, having a parking area makes some sense.
It was much bigger.
And so that's where we were requested to put it in.
How are you going to eliminate, like, the erosion coming from that brook around, you know, are you gonna put a wall? Are you gonna put some kind of a, a division so that it doesn't, it doesn't get flooded?
I'm sorry, what, what erosion from the brook?
From the brook, from the, where, where the culvert is, is right. Can you point to the culvert, please?
One second, let's see if I can get that. Whoop. Culvert is a little bit off the map here.
It's over there?
Yeah.
Okay. And all of this is wet, from the green? That's all water coming down, flowing down.
Yep.
Okay. So you've got that, that last house right at the closest edge of, near, near to the water, correct?
This house here?
Yeah. So to me, to put a parking area in the, I guess it's the front or the side of that house area, it just isn't placed right to me. It just is too critical an area.
From a flood management perspective, there's no issues with that at all, where it's above the flood plain, the hundred-year flood plain, as is the entire development, there's, there's no flood-related concerns here.
It's erosion, that's the issue, and the water is coming down, it's the elevation.
I, I think as far as that level of technical discussion is concerned, if, if the engineer doesn't have it on his plans, and Larry hasn't picked that up as a problem, I've got to assume what was being said is correct. I mean, I, I didn't look at that level of detail. That's the kind of stuff that Larry's gotta pick up. We can't be getting into dealing with engineers on that level of detail.
Can I ask one, one other question about parking? Is, is the idea that for each of these units, there'd be two, two spots? Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
And a garage, two-car garage.
And there is a, two-car garage?
Car garage, so four on each.
All right, that's good.
So I, I think to your point on that, Tilly, we'll just make sure that Larry just okay's that specifically.
Okay. I'm kind of shocked that the, the CONCOM, is that correct, said cedar posts as markers? I've never heard of that from them. That I questioned.
Well, that'll be part of the order of conditions that we get from the Conservation Commission. It's, I have heard of cedar posts with the little markers on them. I've heard of made of other things, but I don't think it's too unusual, but they like them, and they like them in frequent intervals.
I've been here, what, over 10 years, maybe 15 now, and I've never heard of it.
Of having the markers, or the cedar markers?
Cedar posts.
Oh, the cedar posts.
They usually send that four by four.
Mm-hmm. They can do that, too.
But that's up to Conservation Commission.
That's basically everything that you have said. I want the backup in writing. Okay, that's a general.
Okay. Anything else?
And the Board of Health, now, I mean, I understand you're going to the state. Have you gotten that approval?
No, that would be the next step. There's a considerable amount of additional engineering funds, and we know this will work. We've done the official soil testing, the soils are there. The sizing, we show them the plan. So that would be a next step. It's more of a construction phase, similar to, you know, you wouldn't be designing the construction plans for all the buildings at this phase. That's, that's the building permit, which is the next phase.
So you wouldn't get a decision from us until that was approved?
No, no, that's not correct.
John, is that correct?
Their position is correct. That, that's a sequence of events. I mean, they can't build anything without having the septic capacity.
But did they need their decision first, is that, or do we wait for the Board of Health?
No, they would get a decision from the planning board as to this plan. The next phase is actually detailing, uh, the actual septic system. You know, everything having to do with the building permits, water connections.
Okay, all right, I'm done.
Okay, um, so I, I think it would, um, so the culvert seems to be a big issue. And I, it seems to me that we wanna get in writing, um, specific to, you know, the interconnectedness of our road system. We want that addressed by the police and fire. We, we need something in writing from them as to what their opinion is on that. I, I think, um, I'm just speaking for myself, but as, as a planner too, you know, it's, it makes sense that you wanna connect them, but then there's the residents and, and, you know, I wanna try to be sensitive to that too, and so, um.
Ross, can I just add to this? Everybody has to realize that that was a connecting roadway system that fell into disrepair. And the developer is being basically tagged with the responsibility to reconnect the roadway. And that's been a longstanding, uh, plan. And the developer did go to the abutting community, got that approved as part of the overall approval process. So everybody that does live along this roadway on either side of it now, really does have to realize this was a connected roadway system. And the goal of the community, the ultimate goal of the community to, is to restore that roadway system to what it was. It's only by fault of nature and, um, you know, insufficient funds that it wasn't rebuilt, um, within the year after it happened. You know, that's how stringent resources are. And, um, you know, the developer has agreed to go along with the reconnecting and, and bearing the cost of that as part of this particular development. And that's been a longstanding process and planning process and agreed-to, um, plan for many years now. I, I know, I know that the abutters would, you know, not maybe all of them, but a lot of them would like to have it remain as it is. But, you know, the reality is, this was part of our overall connecting roadway system. And as, as far as planners are concerned, that's a primary responsibility and goal and objective in reaching any decision. And it should always be. I mean, we're talking about safety and a more efficient roadway network that services the overall community and not just the special interests of few. Sound like a socialist in a way, I guess, but I'm trying to be a planner.
I don't, I don't wanna get bogged down in this. I really don't. I wanted to take the temperature.
Yeah, no, that was, that's clear.
So I think what we would like to do is continue on with the plan in accordance with the concept plan that was approved, that has the road connection done. And not go down this idea of not doing that work. I wanted to flush it out a little bit because I wasn't involved in the project when that was made part of the project. But as John correctly points out, it was part of the project. All along. So given comments that we heard at the last meeting, and I, I thought it was worth floating the idea. I think I floated it, and I think it sunk. So, uh, let's just take that off the table. We'll do the road connection.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with, with respect to that, have, have we actually gotten, um, plans for the, uh, the culvert, the, the repair?
Yeah, yeah, no, you got.
I have them? They were in the last, they were in the last set.
You have those in Larry's.
Yeah, and they were electronically sent to board members too.
That's a full, it's a full set.
Yeah, that's it. But you have all the plans. I think Larry has reviewed them.
Was that at our last meeting?
That was at our last meeting, correct.
Joe wasn't at? Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Last meeting, we had this one.
Okay.
On the driveway light fixtures, uh, are those just lantern lights for the driveway?
Yeah, residential, residential style, you know, the, you don't need giant overhead, you know, Cobra lights.
Are these, I'm just trying to get clarity, 'cause, um, the, the Georgetown Light Department has a decorative lantern, um, that is, I think it's twelve feet tall. And, you know, they'll place those along the road. Is, is that what you were indicating? What are you, what is it that you're thinking?
I think those would be way too intense for a small residential project like, like that. I mean, I have one outside of my house, and I'm about ready to take a chainsaw and cut the thing down. These are intended to be residential nature that, that you see on single-family homes that are gonna illuminate the entrance to the driveway so visitors or people coming to the house after, after sunset can see the driveway pull in, and there's some illumination, just, you know, on the walkway, you know, you'll have the, the lanterns in the front of the house too, so people can just see where they're walking and parking.
Well, I support that approach one hundred and fifty percent. So if you run into any issues, let me know.
Okay, we'll do it.
I'm gonna change software.
Love the dark sky and polar light.
So the, the issue of, um, water and power coming in together, it, it seems like that was something that seemed to be, um, thought of as a, made sense. Um, I thought I heard that. Is that something that you can respond to tonight, or?
No, Larry didn't, uh, he, he just, uh, said part of the condition, uh, and I guess we're kind of at the mercy of both light departments. Georgetown, very accessible, very good service, national grid, all due respect. We could be nine months waiting for a response from that one. My, my recommendation would be to, you know, if you wanted some coverage on that, to put a condition in that we will, we will look into the connection options.
Fair enough.
But I, I think we, we could really get bogged down for a long time.
I think you made a good case that it makes sense for them to go together if there is an emergency. Whoa, who's providing this? What's going?
We, we will talk to them about that, and, and perhaps we can get something, uh, from them when they're, we're looking for something in writing.
Yeah, how about, I mean, I have for a suggestion, rather than going cross-country and, you know, getting into those wetland areas, what, can you stay within the right-of-way of Larkin?
There are some very large trees that would have to be cut down in that area.
Get that idea, so.
Are they diseased?
Large dead trees are also very good for habitat.
Snags, I've got snags in my backyard.
That's a long time.
They're dangerous.
No wonder you get out of the CONCOM.
We, we propose that, I, we, we did have that discussion with the agent, and, you know, cutting of the trees is not gonna overwhelm.
Oh, I was, I was thinking you'd speak to the highway surveyor, who's the tree warden?
So, um.
Give the good points and bad.
He seems like a confident of interest there.
So on your, um, uh, wildflower seeding, will there be a plan in place, a written plan in place?
Yeah.
For how many years it would be in place? It typically takes about three years to get those things truly established.
Entertain me, I, I haven't submitted this because this is gonna, we want this to go through the Conservation Commission first, so this is.
That's fine. So we'd be, be looking for something that basically would say, showing some sort of commitment for three years. That, that's kinda how long it takes to get these things established. And then, um, that, uh, it's a written plan that's enforced somewhere in, I don't need a condom, condo documents or whatnot.
Yeah, that for certain, um, any, any conditions that are imposed would be part of the condo docs as far as maintenance. I would be hesitant to put any conditions in a planning board decision that may conflict with a Conservation Commission decision because what if they ask, what if they say two is fine, or what if they want five? And now we've got conflicting decisions where this is almost entirely in the purview of the Conservation Commission. I would, I would propose that this board.
If that's totally, if that's totally in their purview, I thought some of it was in planning. If that's totally in their purview, then absolutely it's theirs.
With, with respect to, like, rain gardens and, and other things, you know, certainly that's part of the stormwater operation and maintenance, and that, that is part of what you're reviewing. And we need to make sure those are consistent between the two. And Larry Graham's reviewed the stormwater piece, but regards to the, you know, and this is, if you look at, you know, the landscape plan, I mean, if it's not a hundred percent, it's ninety to ninety-five percent of all of this work is in the buffer zone in the Conservation Commission jurisdiction. So that, that's just where I'm hesitant to, to get into overlapping.
Understood. I guess, um, maybe we wait and see what they say, and maybe we go with the, the most restrictive in terms of, or the most conservative approach.
I think that's a good idea.
See what they, see what they say.
Yep. If I, and I could, if I could, um, I could, I could go over what is, and summarize briefly what is in here, but as I mentioned, there's initial monthly, uh, maintenance that occurs just to get the initial growth that comes back after you do the work. So that's just come in, they send in an intern with a five-gallon bucket, and they go and they just pick, and they just get all that, and every month you thin it out more and more. And then, uh, that happens, and then for a period, after the first growing season, you cut that from monthly down to quarterly. And then, uh, after that, uh, there's, um, the regulatory provision that the wetland scientist is referencing is a two-year, a two-year monitoring. So that, that would be three years net after that. So that's what is in the report that would be, will be filing with the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
I explain the rest of it in my presentation.
All right. Uh, the same basic, yeah, so that's the invasive species, so that takes care of that. The culvert issue, that's been taken care of. The parking area, um, so there are a couple, there are a handful of minor items that Larry needs to respond to. It seems the parking that Tilly was questioning, just, she just, just want verification that that is gonna function fine. What was the other thing? In writing, um, some of the statements with regards to, I think.
Emergency vehicles?
Yeah, yeah, making sure we've got that all set, get those documents all set. Was there anything else, John, that we were missing?
No, but I, I just wanna visit this parking issue because, um, you know, if it is a major problem, um, with board members agreeing to it, do you have an alternative, the location?
It's not a problem for me, as one board member.
And just, just for the record, the location, I don't have an issue with the location. I have an issue with the, the, how minimalist it is. And I'm, I'm just not wild about cars backing up into a roadway that by testament of the neighbors of the abutters will be a cut through. I'm just not wild. I, I don't feel it's safe that way. It should be more of an ability to drive in and at least turn around and drive out. And, uh, I know you're between the rock and the hard place, and we're playing ping pong. You're the ping pong ball between us and the CONCOM, I get it. Won't be the first time, it won't be the last, but.
Well, I think I have, I can, I have a solution on the floor here. I can, I can work into the plans, so we'll be coming back. It's a similar concept where you're pulling in, uh, but we extend, well, we just extend the parking spaces in deeper. So instead of coming in right now, they proposed to come in twenty feet, and then we have the walkway. We pull those in maybe forty feet, so you've basically got a full aisle to back out to before you cut out, right? So it's still a pull-in situation.
Pull this down.
In the, yes, in the buffer zone, the buffer zone does pull away there, so that's not putting anymore, not much will work in the buffer zone, but I think that would be a reasonable.
That makes sense.
And I'm not on CONCOM anymore, but most of the people that are, I know are, are very reasonable about that. And if you just point out that, well, there's at least members of the planning board that are concerned about public safety and people backing out, and I would hope that they'd allow something like that.
Sure.
And they wouldn't give you a hard time.
But if, you know, is that, I mean, I think that would solve the backing issue.
I very much doubt you're always gonna have five cars parked there. I, I think you're probably gonna have one or two, you know, people. If, if you have five cars there, the problem is that Larkin Road has a bunch of other cars on it, if there's that many. And there's something going on, and a bunch of people, yeah, something's happening, and somebody saw something, and.
One of the, sometimes what happens when the parking lots get extended like that is people will double park. And, uh, they shouldn't, but people being people, sometimes they do that. There, there's no way to maybe eliminate a space and turn it perpendicular and come in and, versus parallel with the Larkin Road.
I'll, I'll have to take a closer look at that.
'Cause I don't know if four's necessary. So if you, I guess we're not gonna solve it here tonight, but you can, like, there is some question. See if you can come up with a, with another solution that might resolve better everyone's concerns.
Well, I mean, the thing is, that, that wouldn't solve the problem of double, double parking. Because you're reducing the number of car, of spaces.
No, no, what I, what I, what I'm, what I'm referring to is that instead of coming in this way, you'd be coming like this.
Right.
How you're parking.
Yeah. But.
I mean, the stacking of the vehicles, unless they're, they know each other, I mean.
Yeah, no.
It's very, in the likelihood of somebody locking somebody in like that. And, and just the probability of getting five cars and then a six-one showing up.
Yeah.
I think we were talking about.
Some things you just can't plan for.
Very, very low probability that ever happens.
Illegal on the street?
It's not signed as.
So, I mean, if, if a six showed up, they could just pull it over here.
What, what, what would be the speed, what is the speed limit? I mean, it doesn't.
Typically, it's thirty-five.
It's thirty-five, and it, do, do you know what the speed limit is?
It's not marked.
It's not marked today.
It should be twenty.
Georgetown's, Parrish Road's thirty.
Parrish Road is thirty.
I mean, I, I think it's interesting that you talk about public safety, but yet you don't talk that, and I, and I understand that the road, that culvert used to be open, but it had a three-ton weight limit on it. And that was to not allow large vehicles up Parrish Road, 'cause it can't handle it. You rebuild the culvert, I don't know what the weight limit is gonna be, I haven't seen the plan. But if you're gonna allow, if you wanna allow a fire truck over it, we're, we're gonna have large trucks up and down Parrish Road, and, and that's a public safety issue. I know public safety for these ten homes is police and fire, but there's public safety issues for people that live on that road having, you know, ten, twelve, you know, ten, sixteen-wheelers up and down that street coming off of ninety-five getting into Georgetown.
But can't you prohibit that?
That's a public safety issue. Um, I don't know if you can put limitations on it that, you know, for emergency vehicles only, or some sort of limitations, but, yeah, that road was always open. That road was always a dirt road, and that was a three-ton weight limit culvert, always. It was always that way.
So the.
And there was a reason for it.
So the selectmen are responsible for the roads, so they can, you know, they could, with our consultation, I think, provide some sort of limitations, I would like to think.
Certainly, you know, a more moderate speed limit.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, the road is, on Parrish Road, it's filled with little kids. And you got, you got these big, you know, trucks and all the landscape out, shooting up and down there because now the bridge is open and there's no weight limit? You're gonna have a problem. You're gonna have a safety problem. I can guarantee it. I can, I can guarantee it. It'll be back here in three years.
I'm, I'm not sure that I see how you would get a lot more heavy, uh, heavy equipment there because someone going, truckers going into Georgetown are gonna go on one thirty-three. They're, they're not gonna go on North Street. Why would they, why would they come all the way out here to go in here?
They get off of ninety-five, right?
Yeah.
And you wanna go ninety-five to, um, uh, either into Georgetown or you wanna go to Raleigh on one thirty-three? That's the very first turn to get that way. I, I lived it for years.
Yeah, okay.
I lived it for years. Dennis and I used to stand out there and yell at people to slow down.
Yeah, I hear you.
And, and we didn't have the big trucks then, 'cause they couldn't get over the bridge. It was a weight limit. But it's the easiest way into Georgetown, it's the easiest way to Raleigh.
We, we, we could, we could.
And that's, that, to me, that's public safety, you know?
What is, what is the culvert, um, designed for?
It would, uh, age twenty-five, so twenty-five ton, you know, it would hold the fire truck.
It's going to hold an eighteen-wheeler.
I mean, if, if, it, it would, it would, the only kind of posting you could do that would make sense would be emergency vehicles only.
Right.
Um, then it's an enforcement issue.
And a low speed limit.
Does West Street have a limit on the, did you ask? No?
Nothing, no.
So, so what are, so what are the outstanding issues then? What I'm trying to do is just identify them. There, there's, the culvert is a yes, but we're having this question about the circulation in the public safety issue for, on both sides of the fence. There's the parking area. There's the separation of power and water, or not separating power and water. And were there any other big items? I didn't.
Only the overhead power lines in the land that is to be given to the town.
But was that going through conservation land?
It will be.
That's, that's their call, right?
That just showed up on the plan.
I think.
Well, yeah, but.
John brought up a.
I'm just saying, if it's conservation land, that's their jurisdiction.
Back to the culvert, if, like he was saying, the selectmen are responsible for roads. So they're responsible for that road, so it's their decision. If they, if we eliminate that culvert, we have taken off part of that road, and I don't think we have that jurisdiction.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're going there to, to eliminate the culvert. I think we'll, I think what the selectman's role would be, would, would be to, um, limit and post it in certain ways that are, that are trying to mitigate the issue.
Would it make sense to communicate this quandary, if you will, to the selectmen?
Yeah, no, I, I definitely think so.
You'd be right, I know, this is what we're talking about.
But so, so are there any other major issues, is, is what I'm trying to get at?
No, I don't think so.
No, I think those are the big ones.
We need things in writing, that's about it.
Yeah, no, no, and, and in writing, so, um. So the parking area Larry Graham's going to specifically look at.
We're going to come, we're going to look at if there's a different option to address some of the concerns with regard to the parking layout.
Correct.
And get it in so that Larry can look at it. Um, and if there isn't another option, then he needs to just confirm that he's looked at what.
Confirm that what is, and it works.
Has, has been proposed.
That's, yeah.
That's, I think that's where we are with the parking.
I agree. The, the, the combining of power and water. Seems to, uh, seems to make sense. The board seems to be, you know, leaning towards that way.
Can I at least, if we're getting things in writing from the department heads, could we at least talk to emergency services and see if that is an issue? Fire Department really, I think, would be the one that need to shut it down, because our preference would be to come from Georgetown.
Understood.
And we could potentially sign it, and there's other ways we can make sure they know who to call.
As, as long as it's clear in the writing from the, from the fire.
Yeah.
And, and, and water, that both have signed off on.
Yeah.
The approach.
Yeah.
Rob, if we resolve the issue about the, um, Larry, Larry Graham had an issue about a hydrant location, have we resolved that? I'm sorry.
Not a location labeling it. It was just a, it just seemed, we're showing it graphically, he just wanted to add a label.
Oh, he just wanted to make sure it was, oh, okay.
The locations have been vetted by the fire.
Okay, okay.
That's where he wanted.
I thought he was adding one. I read it quickly, sorry.
Yeah.
So, so there, there's a couple, there's, I, I don't know about you guys, but I, I, I just always get confused when stuff is handed in the day of meetings. I, I just do, and, um.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
In regard to this power and water being combined.
Yeah.
They portrayed in their presentation that water is more convenient for them to tie in through the abutting community.
Yeah.
And power is more convenient to come through Georgetown's. And I, I don't see, I don't see why that should be an issue.
Well, I think it was for if, if there's a, if there's an emergency and, and who you're contacting. It was just trying to consolidate the companies.
And I know Georgetown likes to have control of the power grid, you know, within the borders of the town.
Yeah.
You know, this would just be extending that within the borders of the town. Plus they can get the decision, and they already have it basically, from Georgetown as opposed to dealing with, um.
Right.
You know, a larger.
No, and, and National Grid is, is, is a nightmare. Well, if there, if, if the rest of the board, I, I thought that's what I heard, that I thought they were.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, you know, it sounds great in the sense that it'll be a uniform situation, but it really doesn't matter. I mean, Georgetown, I talked to Dave Schofield on this, he's in full agreement with providing power to this particular development. In the manner that they presented this evening.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, it's just more convenient for the water to come by field. If it was more convenient for it to come from Georgetown, they'd be, they'd be doing that. But, you know, water, power, you know, there's no need for a uniform connection for, um, either of those utilities.
Can we get confirmation from the, the fire chief and whoever that they're all fine with it, that it's not an issue?
I, I think that.
That the appropriate, you know, places would know, would report.
I think that's, I think that's something that we need in writing to hang a hat on.
And they need to understand that we're, that the option was brought up about the culvert, because something tells me, and my memory may not be accurate. But.
That's true.
Byfield was not going to give us water without that culvert being done by Georgetown applicant here. That's what I remember. It gave me that impression. I don't know, but I think it was tied.
But we're doing it.
But it seems like the culvert's back on.
The culvert's.
The culvert's back on. We're doing the culvert.
Right.
Yep, yep.
That, that's the problem with reviewing something over longer than a decade.
I know.
Now it's lost.
Thanks, John.
A decade or about two months?
Yeah, really, really.
Oh, no.
My world is moving faster than I was.
So I, I have two things.
So is, is, just to, to what Joanne was saying, though, um, you know, so, so fire would say okay to the, um, the water being, coming through, uh, Byfield. And, um, police may say power coming through, you know. Is there, I, I'm trying to think out loud, and maybe you could help me. Is there, is there an independent professional who would render a, just a, an opinion on what is better? I, I know it's inconvenient to put the two together.
I think it's specific on, it, it's so specific as to each situation, I don't think you're going to find that. I think the question is whether the fire department, because that's where the issue was raised, uh, by, um, here tonight in, in the audience. Was whether it's an issue in the event of a fire, if the electric is coming from one town and the water is, and the fire response is coming from another. So I think we ought to find out from the fire department, are you okay with water coming from Newbury and electric coming from Georgetown? I, I think that's what you're looking for.
Agreed.
Yeah.
All right.
We can get that.
All right. Okay, um, anything, is there anything else?
Not for me.
No, I think it's.
Did we already approve that, with the grass on the side, mill plantings along the side of this road? Was that already voted on?
I'm not sure what you're referencing.
You were referencing that there's, on the side, there would be cur, not a curb, but just grass seeding on either side of the. Was that already?
Country swale?
Look, yeah, low, low impact, more sustainable stormwater.
Just grass, you didn't, you didn't want any plantings? Did we vote on that?
Where, where are you talking about?
Well, it's part of his stormwater management plan, so we, we wouldn't be voting on, on that. That's part of Larry Graham's, you know, the stormwater management plan, which having, you know, grass along the shoulders and in the swales makes all the sense.
You'll notice, we, we are putting what will be effectively the street trees.
Yeah.
And then on the, on the main open area, that, that's going to be a wildflower meadow, all of that. It'll be seeded with wildflowers, so it's not, not manicured lawn on that side, it'd be manicured lawn in other areas, but.
Yeah, but we do have trees.
Yeah.
Along the driveway going in, and we've added some additional trees at the entrance.
Mm-hmm.
And is it, and I guess the last item would be to make sure Larry Graham issues a letter that doesn't say this thing is outstanding. A, item A is outstanding, item B, I don't care what they are, just that he's signed off on all of them. And, and I'm, and, and I, and I want to say this, that if stuff comes in and it, it's not in our packet the week before, which Thursday, they're, John's not in on Friday. The, the office, town hall is closed. So if stuff shows up after Thursday and doesn't make it into the packet, so, I mean, Thursday morning, so that they, poor people can get time to put it together.
Sure.
I'm not going to hear this stuff again, because it, it's, it's, it's hard. It's just hard.
Again, I have to qualify that too, because the deadline is Tuesday prior to Thursday, so that I can put my reports together.
Correct. Correct, correct. So let, so let's just, once again, let's, let's just, and, and let, we should have a sheet where this is written down, and you hand it out, and. So you need, they need enough time to do their work, to have Larry Graham respond to it, to write his letter. So that his letter is in our packet on Thursday, which means John needs it on Tuesday. So that's one of your critical paths.
Which would be this coming Tuesday.
Which we did, we did get that in, I mean, I.
Down, no, no, no.
So.
There, there's a, there's a schedule in everybody's of the understanding. The deadline for submitting anything for the following week's meeting, it's twelve noon on Tuesday. And then that's for everybody, and that gives every, that gives everybody plenty of time to get this stuff in, so that I can put to writing my comment report with all attachments. And out the door by Thursday, Thursday evening. You know, and what's been happening, I'm trying to accommodate everything that's going on, because there isn't, you know, a ton of stuff. So, you know, bending the deadlines and everything, but.
You stop that.
It's just not working out. For this, for this meeting, um, we didn't have everything included with the packet. You know, technically speaking, it, it should be an automatic, you know, continuance. You know, when you get everything done, everything's in order, planning board has everything it needs to conduct its business properly for the hearing. That's when we proceed.
A, and it's better to take a little extra time if it's, you know, instead of the next planning board meeting, if it means that you're not making it till the following, then it's done once, and we, and.
I don't disagree.
You know?
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
So what we have for the next meeting is looking at the parking to see if there is a, a better way to jigger that.
Yeah.
And to have Larry include that in his final letter.
Correct.
That says, I'm happy with the parking, whatever.
Whatever it is, yeah.
And his letter should say nothing else.
Good enough.
Um, all right. And then we need to get confirmation from the fire department that there is not an issue with, um, water from Newbury. And electric from Georgetown.
And, and so get, if you would get that letter from, from fire and from Georgetown Electric, unless we already have that letter from them. That they're okay with the two being separated. And I'd like the police to also at least have a crack at it, so that we and the planning board know that our three primary departments for health, safety, welfare have.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know we've heard of, um, conversations that were held as far as emergency services, uh, emergency nine-one-one. How does that all happen?
But how does the system know to go to Newbury?
How does, how do they know?
It goes to Newbury. It, it's all, it's, it's, it's regional, so.
Let's get that in writing, if we.
So like the landline and a cell phone in, in any of those houses?
Driving down the highway in Salisbury, and you say you have an emergency in Newbury, they're going to connect you to Newbury. But it, we, we hadn't, we, we were told, when, when it comes in, the first responder's going to be right out of that station, right up the street.
So can we just get that in writing? That's important.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I did have a conversation with the fire chief in that regard. And, you know, it's always been a longstanding policy in place, that it's mutual aid.
Yeah.
We have that agreement with all the abutting communities.
And can we get, do we have that in writing? Or if not, can we get it?
Yeah.
Just make sure. So, so those, so those three. So those, so those three departments, so it's, it's, it's water and power and, and nine-one-one as part of that.
I thought the nine-one-one went, call went to Danvers, and then Danvers sent it to the address.
Really?
Yeah, it's, it doesn't directly go to.
When do you plan on issuing the condo documents?
Um, I wanted to talk to you about that. Um, it is very early right now in the process to be doing condominium documents that are meaningful. What do you want to see as far as condominium documents? Why, I guess, what, what are you looking for in it?
Want, want to make sure that some of those items we were talking about earlier, such as the management plans.
Yep.
Um, so maybe it's just an outline at this point in time of the condo documents.
Yeah.
That just to say, this is going to be, these items are going to be included, and so there was, there was.
I was thinking, I was thinking that we would take that as a condition of the site plan approval, that the condominium documents shall contain the following items. And that way, once we do the condominium documents, we will, that will be a condition of the site plan approval, that all of these different items will be.
That they're covered.
Covered in the condominium documents as being the responsibility of the condo association.
And then we send that to our town council, I suspect, and they take a look at that, right?
Right.
Isn't, isn't, is, are the condo docs sent to us to be reviewed prior to, um, construction permit?
Typically not. I wouldn't see that, I, I don't typically give condominium documents to a board for review, because the, that's really a.
We always do that.
Oh, I wouldn't, yeah.
We just have done that.
I, I think it's just the town council, we want the town, our town council to review them to make sure that they're, they're t's across and eyes are dotted.
So I would say maybe a condition in the site plan approval, that the condominium documents will contain the following items.
Yeah.
And will be submitted for review by, and approval by town council prior to the issuance of.
Something.
Some.
Correct, correct. Yep, that covers her. Yep, yep.
I, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask another question, and, and it was about, could you, could you put that, that picture up again?
That one there, yeah.
And it's really the, the, um, the wetlands area, um, this, this wetlands area here. There's going to be invasive species management, so you're going to basically rip out purple loo strife and other stuff like that.
It's going to be limited in less intensive than that. The idea is to cut and clip, uh, for example, the bittersweet, cut off one-foot section at the base, so it kills the rest of the plant that's grown fifty feet up the tree. And manage it, so it's not out of control.
It's not, it's not an eradication plan.
No, no.
And I, that's important.
It's not, it's not really a feasible undertaking in that area, because it is so rampant, but we can keep it in check, is the idea.
Right.
Um, I, I mean, really, the, the, the underlying question is that, um, this is woodland. It's all woodland, and, um, trying to keep that from become, are, are you trying to keep this from becoming woodland again?
We want to keep it woodland.
Okay.
Right now, the invasive species are going to destroy any trees or mature plants that are in there. They'll be gone.
I'm battling them in my backyard.
So will, will, will those plans be in our packets? Those, those management plans for invasive and for, uh, can we take a look at those also in our packets?
Yeah, let me check, and I, I did want to give the concom the courtesy of the first stab at this, because it, I, I felt it was more of a concom matter.
When do they, when do they?
We're meeting with them on the eighteenth to talk to them.
Wait, 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 wait. Wait and see what they say.
Yeah.
All right, all right. So we're going to, so, so it's eight-thirty, uh, we've been about an hour and a half, I think, and we're going to have to move on. We'll have to continue this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, all right, well, just one sec. Is there anything else?
I don't think.
I just don't want to miss anything. I want to try to get this at the next go-around.
Exactly. Um, I don't think so. I think that's all, I think I've got, um, the items that we've just talked about. Parking, utility, uh, a condition in the condo docs. And what I would propose is that I, I talk to John about the conditions, so that you have a decision in front of you at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Um, so when, are you meeting in two weeks?
I don't even want to think about it.
Yeah, it won't.
November fourteenth.
Yeah, you, you really do.
Next Tuesday is the deadline for everything to release.
Exactly. Okay, so I, I was thinking you'd probably want to go out to another meeting, so that would be the fourteen.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Right, November.
November fourteenth, continue the public area.
We have an absent member, so.
What is it?
Not going to be here, November.
You're gone the whole month?
What's our December meeting?
December is on the twelfth.
Make a motion to continue to December twelfth.
Really late for us. I think we, if, we would prefer to stay on for your November meeting.
I really don't like those overhead power lines.
Wow, okay.
Board might be in a real good mood right before Christmas. Board might be in a real good mood right before Christmas.
Providence, we're going to be engaging the conservation commission discussions and we lose a lot of time. We lose two months because we're going to have comments back from them. We'll have some feedback, there might be some adjustments and things to report back to you. Two months is a big setback.
Can you, can you switch the dates in the meetings? Is that not permissible?
Tilly's gone the whole, she's gone the whole...
Or the whole month, that's true.
I think we're stuck with December 12th. Is that the date?
I want, all right, so let's, so, you know, this, this, this happened once before on a project before where there was a personal agenda for one particular item that was used to hold hostage an entire project in a special permit. And it backfired and it was a pretty crappy situation and I don't want to go through that again. So I'd like to think that the board members, if there are four of us and we have a meeting in November, will take, if they're the only person that's holding out for one issue and the other three are saying, "No, we're fine with that issue," that that board member would say, "Okay, in the best interest of everybody, I'm going to go along with the board and vote yes." Um, I, so, that's, that's that. It's your call. I, I...
I mean, the days we have to, we could fool around here is Halloween. Does anybody want to meet on Wednesday, the 31st?
Is that literally Halloween?
Yeah.
I can't.
I, I want to go...
Trick or treating's big.
No.
I got to do the door.
No.
Nobody comes to my house, I don't have to be there.
You're not going to be here for November 7th, right?
No.
That would be too scary to be...
Oh, wait a minute, November 7th? Yeah, I could, I could make November 7th.
November 7th. Instead of meeting on the 14th, we could meet November 7th and help facilitate things.
Yeah, I just can't make the two regular scheduled meetings.
And the thing is, is two weeks before or between the 24th of October and the 7th of November because there are five Wednesdays in October.
But don't we, aren't we waiting for questions to be answered by the CONCON?
Mm-mm.
Didn't I, didn't we say a couple of things?
If the board, if the board wanted to have a meeting November 7th and it's a good possibility everybody's going to be here, that, that's sufficient time to take care of everything.
We would appreciate that.
First, get back here. Otherwise, we're, we're dealing with a four-member board for the 14th.
So what, so when, what would be the date?
Um, the date would be November 7th.
That we would meet?
Yeah.
Oh, you can do that?
Yes. Oh, I just couldn't make the two meetings that were regularly scheduled for November.
Does that give enough time to have Larry Graham write us a letter that says, "Thumbs up, guys"?
Yeah. Yeah, because today, we're, we're at the 10th, so we're close to a month and we should be able to get everything squared away by then.
All right.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue the public hearing for 66 Parish Road, OSID Site Plan to November 7th.
Second.
2018.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to continue 66 Parish Road to November 7th, 2018. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see you then.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for attending.
I can be here, it'll be gap right in.
You guys want to take just a couple minute break?
It'd only been three of us.
Want to take a couple minute break?
Sure.
Okay.
So, welcome back. And we're going to begin our second public hearing Georgetown Planning Board with Healthy Farms looking for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move the pages to reopen the special hearing, I think this was it?
Special permit.
Special permit.
Special permit for Healthy Farms recreational marijuana approval.
I'll sign that, Mr. Jim.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to open the Healthy Farms public hearing on special permit petition. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open. So, John, you want to give us an update?
Yes, this hearing was continued from the Planning Board's 26 September 18 meeting. So, this is the initial public hearing on the resubmission. So, there were draft motions provided in the comments report, if you look on page three. So, the actual seating this evening should involve the acceptance of the special permit and site plan applications. So, the first motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to accept a special permit and site plan application calling for the following marijuana businesses to operate at 401 East Main Street. Georgetown, Mass., map 14, lot 4. Number one, a Tier IV indoor cultivator marijuana establishment. Number two, a retail marijuana establishment to include medical marijuana and adult use marijuana sales. And three, a manufacturing marijuana establishment.
Second.
Motion has been made. It's been seconded to accept the special permit and site plan application for 401 East Main Street Georgetown, Mass. As noted in the draft motion drafted and stated by Harry. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. With that, John?
Yeah, and then I'd like to continue. In the September 26 package, all of the attachments that are cited in this present application were included in that particular packet for that meeting, the 26th. What's included as an attachment for this comments report for this evening was the updated decision that may be arrived at this evening by the board. So, all of the dates and all of the issues that were outstanding from the August 22nd meeting on this particular special permit, those have been corrected. So, if you had a chance to read through the draft decision that's included in the comments report, you should find no need for corrections. As opposed to in August when we did an initial review of this, there were a number of problems with the draft decision that have now been corrected. But all of the attachments with the revised traffic report, parking and loading calculations, the stormwater sampling results, request for certificate of occupancy, all of those items that were left over from the August meeting, those have now been addressed by the applicant. And if you did hold on to all those attachments from the 26th, it should be good with the information necessary to make an informed decision tonight if we're lucky enough to get that far.
Okay. With that.
Thank you. For the record, Tony Cappicetti, Hays Engineering, 603 Salem Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts. Here representing Nat Avril, Paul Overgag from Healthy Farms. Just as kind of a history, Healthy Farms was before this board a few years back. We received approval for site plan and special permit to operate a registered marijuana dispensary, which is under the medical program through Department of Public Health on March 9. And the decision was recorded August 5, 2016. Then Commonwealth, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health issued their final certificate of registration on October 11, 2016, and Healthy Farms has been in business since then. By way of the special permit, we're looking to now operate a co-located medical and adult use dispensary cultivation and processing facility. It would be very similar to the use today. It would just open to the newly legal adult use sector of products. And I'll go through some of the differences between the adult and medical use program just for a little background. So, under the old Department of Public Health regulations, all dispensaries, marijuana businesses were nonprofit. They may now incorporate as a for-profit if they so desire, and adult use is a for-profit entity. The age for purchase for adult use is 21-plus. The age for purchase with a registered marijuana card for medical use is 18-plus. Medical purchases are tracked by the state. You're allowed to purchase up to 10 ounces of product at any one time, which is a 60-day supply. And adult use is just limited to 1 ounce or 5 grams of concentrate per transaction for each visit. Edible products, they have no limit on THC content for medical use because depending on what your ailment is, you may need a higher dose. For the adult use, it's limited to 5 milligrams per serving or 100 milligrams per package. Anecdotally, I think, medical typically 10 milligrams on dosing for the edibles.
It can go higher for some people.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's about half kind of the entry dosage on the adult use.
Many states have adult use at 10 milligrams. Massachusetts was especially conservative.
The medical product, one of the key features is are those people still seeking it for medicinal use? There's no sales tax, no excise tax, and a local tax portion on that. So, it is a reduced rate for those people seeking it for medicinal use and that are registered. Currently, medical uses, there are banks that'll accept debit cards for the purchase. It's still kind of an unknown for the adult use, but there is some hope that sometime relatively soon it'll be beyond cash only, but that is one of the differences. But as far as the labeling, testing, that's all identical between the medical and adult use programs. What we're seeking tonight, very minor modifications to the previously approved plan. Exterior-wise, there will be no change. What they'll do interior is they'll provide point of sales that are basically open to anyone, and then point of sales that are restricted to medical only. Those people will be allowed to just go with their medical card so they don't have to wait in line if there is a line, and they'll just take care of the medical. However, if there's someone using the medical and the adult use line is open, they can go there with their card as well. And the other change to the site is the customer level is currently unknown for adult use. We can speak to what they're seeing now. A lot less than what we anticipated for vehicles, you know, maybe 50 vehicles a day, 55 vehicle trips a day. Their hope is to double the business. ITE has issued some numbers that are ridiculous. They're saying in excess of 250 vehicles per day per 1,000 square feet of floor area. And that may be the case in some of these, they studied four sites across the country, and they came up with an average. And if you look at the graph, it looks like a shotgun blast and they draw a line between. Our experience, we've been involved in close to 60 facilities permitting at this point in time. No one in their wildest dreams thinks that they're going to do 250 customers per 1,000 square feet. Like I said, their hope is to double that with the traffic levels doubling their current medical purchases. You'd be under the 499 vehicles per day we had estimated under B&amp;W Press. If you use the ITE trip generation numbers and you extrapolate from the two closest, so the ITE trip generation numbers, there's a facility at about 1,500 square feet that's just off the charts. And I have to think that they camped out in Colorado before their first grand opening and, you know, they saw 2,000 customers. If you look at the 3,000 and 4,000 square foot facility, those are looking at about, you know, 250 vehicles per, trips per day regardless of their size. They're about the same. I think they vary by about 12 cars over the course of a weekday. If you extrapolate that out and look at our total increase, it's 58 vehicles per day over the B&amp;W Press numbers. We don't think we'll hit that, but just using some engineering numbers that are out there to kind of cover the bases and look at a range of what trip generation may look like. I really don't see it, what you're getting in the suburban areas of people who drive by, for lack of a better term, stock up because they're not on every corner. In Boston, you get more frequent visitations with smaller quantities. And that's what we're seeing. The Healthy Farms has another location in Cambridge. And they have guys, customers that stop in, small purchase, in and out versus, they have regular customers here, but they're not here on a daily basis. They're, you know, monthly or, you know, sometimes even longer than that. So, that was the one kind of site difference that there would be is the potential for traffic. Using our judgment and experience, we don't see it, but there are publications out there that do offer some extremely inflated numbers, and we did want to make the board aware of Again, there were some comments that came out before we withdrew our last application in August due to some notification issues. As far as notes on the plan, we provided those notes. We had a note on the plan about visual inspection. We provided an ASBIL plan. That was done by either tape or instrument survey. And then, we hadn't been out there in a little over a year, so we did a drive-by and said, what changed, what didn't? There were a couple of spaces that got turned in the back of the building. So, that was done by visual inspection. They were taped and approximated for the location, but they're not critical to really anything that's going on in the plan. Their overflow spaces, they don't come close to using their parking facilities that they've provided so far. And these are just kind of rear spaces to the employees. And the four spaces I'm talking about are these spaces right there. And the other thing that I caught after the plan was submitted is that the, because we did update the ASBIL plan, the owner, I stole the title block from our last site plan, was not updated. It still says Paul Beegan from One Realty. This is actually owned from, is it Seven Brothers?
Three brothers.
Three Brothers Trust, which is, Mr. Overgag's the trustee for that. Should the board move to approve it, we can provide a MyLAR that is updated with that and any other conditional changes the board may want.
Anyone in the public have any questions at this point? Seeing no one in the public, Tilly, you want to start? Did you have any questions?
Okay. Well, I made it out there yesterday. I thought that would be the first thing out of your mouth, Paul.
Officially, I'm going to make the apology that way, way back, I missed a meeting with the planning board on the site, so my apologies for that.
All right. And as soon as, and it's a very impressive building inside as well as the outside. I was pleased with that. When I opened the door, I got this huge odor. It wasn't sweet like I thought if it was marijuana. It was so poignant that I really, it hit me right in the face. I mean, my hair and everything, it smelled like aged soil that had been treated and vegetation had grown in it, and it just was, it had a very potent smell. The rest of the building, except where the plants were, had a similar smell, but not as potent as when you came in. So, I was thinking perhaps, they had the venting all around, maybe you had it open and only open there and directly from where your plants are.
No, the vestibule doesn't get a lot of airflow. It can have a harbors and smell. Maybe we could leave that door open before, we can't leave it open while we have patients coming and going because it's hard.
Get out of the air, you know.
I'm sorry. I'm a little bit sick.
Tom, sir.
The vestibule, it functions as a man trap, and it doesn't really have a lot of good airflow. But the hours before we open, we could open the dispensary side door and let it air out a little bit better. I think we could do something there.
I think it would be a good idea.
Haven't been out to the site, though, as far as outside the building concerned. There's very little odors, been my experience.
Yeah, I didn't smell it outside. That's true. Everything is confined. There's no openings at all. You have, windows are shut. Nothing is, it's all the air vac. Well, it needed attention in that, in that area. And I still.
On the, excuse me for saying something, but on the other side, though, if you go to a coffee shop, you like the smell of coffee, so you go to a marijuana retail facility, you might want to have it smell like retail marijuana.
We don't get complaints out of it.
You're telling me I'm the only one?
No, me too, me too. Every time I walk in there, I go, like, guys, this smells in here. Because I'm not in it every day.
How are you going to fix it? That's one thing I thought needed attention.
Okay. Point made.
The other thing is, is that your plan here, I didn't expect all the little cubby holes of little rooms. And I thought that should be something, you know, you have the sprinkler system, but I would think that the fire department would need something, a diagram of where all these rooms are.
They have that.
I believe they do.
They do?
So, under the Department of, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Under the Department of Public Health review under the last permit, they did an architectural review and a security plan. And the floor plans are included in that security plan and get updated should they need to be. So, that security plan is still in place, and the floor plan was reviewed. A lot of those nooks and crannies and cubby holes are required by architectural review through Department of Public Health, especially that man trap when you come in. And then separation for, I mean, they, you're not subject to HIPAA, but they are medical patients, so that you do want to be able to separate them and be able to counsel them privately.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's what I was thinking, that you needed something, you needed some kind of petition between the two customers, the two type of customers. I was, the employees were great. I mean, they were very friendly. Who did I have? Nick escorted me all around. The bakery was excellent. There again, the fire hazard. I was wondering about, there's a pile of, what was it, three or four propane tanks that when they do the oil, was that, no, what was it?
Those are CO2. They're not flammable. CO2, it's not flammable gas.
CO2s? Okay. So, they're not, okay.
We have flammable cabinets for anything that we would need to store in the flammable.
But you do have to heat them to make the oil.
We don't heat the tanks. Those are, it's part of a supercritical CO2 extraction process. It's high-pressure CO2, and it gets, it's in a closed loop, it gets recycled, it's not flammable, it's not toxic.
And that's, and that was under the medical, that was one of the questions was, so there's a couple types of extraction. The other one is butane can be used, which is a lot cheaper process.
Right.
Healthy Farms opted for the safer, more expensive CO2 process.
Toxic and flammable.
Yes.
Okay, so, so you don't use any butane at all? Yeah, okay. All right, well, I'm glad you cleared that one up. And I asked about the waste. What they do is they use a wood chipper. They put all the leaves in there and.
Grind it up.
And then you mix it with wood chips, is it?
Soil.
Foil?
Soil.
Soil. And then it's collected and dispersed once a month? I think that should be in the, and they come and, where does the stock hole go?
We don't know.
It goes to certified land.
I mean, when you collect enough, I didn't see a place to put that stuff.
So, the state requires us to grind it under camera with two registered background-checked agents, to mix it with soil until it's totally irrecoverable. So, at that point, there's, and what we're grinding, actually, 99% of that is like the stocks of the plant. Nobody would want to recover it anyways, but we grind it up, we mix it with soil, and then it can go to a certified landfill, composting, or incineration facility.
So, wouldn't it be any good to replant your plants again in the soil after it's ground up?
No. We don't reuse the soil mostly because it's a pest risk. If you get a pest in those kinds of environments that are very tightly controlled, they will take off, they'll grow very fast. And so, reusing the soil is just a risk that we don't want to take.
But I didn't see any pile of this being done. If you're going to have it picked up once a month, where is it?
There's a dumpster for it.
Hmm?
There's a dumpster for it.
Outside?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, I think go outside. Okay. I just, some questions I had, maybe, John, I had for you was, was did you check with the health department to see if they were checking on the baking and whatnot?
That wasn't done.
That wasn't done? Okay.
I do have included in our packets for tonight on everybody's, in front of everybody tonight, we had response from Chief Cutmore. And he did want me to read specifically into the record, Bob Page memorandum. This is a supplemental comment from the police chief in addition to what our original report was from him. But it reads, this is again from Chief Cutmore dated September 24, 2018. In regard to the special permit application for Healthy Farms, in parentheses, recreational, I have reviewed the plan outlined above. I have no specific comments so long as the special permit voted on, on March 9, 2016, for the medical operation of Healthy Farms is still in effect relative to special conditions. Page four, section 10. In closing, as always, should you need any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact my office. Respectfully submitted, Donald C. Cutmore, Chief of Police.
Now, in the new decision, that's section nine, right?
That is correct, yeah. And there are other conditions that reference these checks, that were checks and balances. So, if anybody wants specific reference to that, that's on page four. And again, it's condition nine. And it just starts out, there will be an annual written communication between the permit holder and the chief of police. So, the exact language that's included in the December 9, 2016 decision for the medical marijuana is also included in this recreational application.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you get the green cards for the, for this legal ad?
Yes, yeah, yeah. We got those too. The other thing, he did include a lengthy memo dated October 10, 2018. Everybody does have that before them. It's the police chief's memo. And he also included a log of calls, all of the calls pertaining to this particular address, 401 East Main Street. And that's for years 2015 through 2018. And the lengthier memo in front of you, basically, there have been no calls in regard to this particular business needing any emergency services on behalf of the police department. There were a couple of issues within the vicinity, but nothing having to do with this particular company. That's cited in this memo. That's all I wanted to add.
Well, since you mentioned that 11 there is, I question, any three or more incident reports within any 30-day period will result from the planning board at its discretion holding a public meeting. How did that 30-day come? How did that decision come to be? Three out of 30-day period on page four.
That's how I wrote it in the original.
Was that the original?
Yeah.
Because this is twice as much business, do you think it should be changed at all?
I don't feel it should change in any way. I think it's.
Yeah. And the traffic report.
There's no indication that there might be a problem.
The traffic report, I could not read at all. Why you compared it to Carlton Drive? I don't get. I, that's me with a puzzle.
Where are you?
I'll find it. This thing. This is dated August 24. I think.
That's dated, and there was a math error on there because we had portions of the building that are to remain vacant included in that. The latest provision, or the latest submission, it has a section on traffic.
What's the date on that that you're talking about?
This came in with the original, with the subsequent filing.
Okay.
It was like September 20?
Yes, September 20.
September 26? Okay. Yeah, it's pretty much the same thing, though. I couldn't figure that one out either. You're talking, to me, I thought it was apples and oranges. You're talking your business compared to what was over on Carlton Drive?
I don't recall.
This thing.
Reference.
Yeah, that's this space.
Okay, so, there are, I apologize. So, Mass DOT puts out traffic counters on a regular basis. And along 133, they count the number of vehicles that go by, and one of the recording stations is located at Carlton Drive, and they check that on a regular basis. So, what we compared it to was, you know, the traffic counts, the average daily traffic counts over the course of a year that is projected by Mass DOT is 14,297 vehicles traverse that road on a day, which is quite a number.
Fourteenth, oh, okay, fourth, I forgot that number up there.
Yep. All we were doing was saying that, you know, if you take the ITE numbers and we go to that, that higher projected number of 557, which is 58 more vehicles per day, that is a drop in the bucket on the average day. It's less than 1% of the total traffic that goes by there. So, that was just kind of a point of reference without going through the costly expense of doing traffic counts. And when we first submitted, school wasn't in session, which is not a time to be doing traffic counts. So, we tried to look at what was there for available data just to kind of give the board some information as a point of reference. I apologize for the confusion with the Carlton Drive reference, but it was only there as approximate the site, and that is a known data point.
So, the best way, I'm just using common sense, I'm not an engineer in traffic. The best way, I would think, is how many customers that you have right now?
It's.
Per day?
It was in the 50s.
Eighty-six per day, sure, 172 trips.
I would say it's really not our expertise to be questioning how a traffic report is put together. And if we have concerns with that, then we could certainly engage an independent party to review who does traffic reports, to give their opinion on it. But to start getting into the methodology is just.
Weren't you a consultant, didn't you say you were a traffic consultant?
We did the traffic reporting. No, that's.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, the questioning of the methodology that they've used, that's just, that's just not our expertise, and we shouldn't be questioning that. And if we do have a question about it, which is legitimate, that we don't, then we get an independent third party who is also a traffic engineer to review it and advise us of what they think.
Yeah.
I, so.
Well, that was my concern because it's such a busy highway, 14,000 cars, you're saying, based on DOT. You know, I think that's a dangerous corner. When I was there, there was nobody there except me, and then somebody came in with a motor. You know, I think that's a dangerous corner. When I was there, there was uh, uh, nobody there except me, and then somebody came in with a motorcycle. They took off from the parking lot of, of the business, went straight across to go up National Ave. I mean, I, I closed my eyes when I saw him going there. You know, it's dangerous, and I think maybe that's, if the board agrees to it, I think uh, that would be a good idea. To have a, another.
We'll bring that, we'll put that up to the board at the end of, for everyone who's around.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's pretty much.
Uh, may I add a, a, a quick response?
Sure.
Um, the, the safety portion of the traffic study was vetted by uh Mr. Graham during the um medical uh special permit process. So things like site distance and, and those items are not changing. I mean, we haven't relocated the driveways, so as far as the, the safety.
The numbers.
Yes, it's just the numbers, and we're looking at fifty-seven, in worst case, fifty-seven more vehicles on a daily basis on a road that i- is nearing fifteen thousand.
Understood.
Yeah, no, so I just wanted to.
It's, I, I think it's a question of just comfort for.
No, that's completely understandable.
Bob?
I, I have no questions. I, I'm very satisfied with the work you guys have done, and uh, I'm, I'm ready to go.
Um, I, I just had a quick question about the plan itself, the site plan itself. There's a dotted line a- around the, um, the area. I think, what did you call it, the man trap?
Oh, no, that's the, the retail.
That's the retail?
Space, the retail floor space.
That, and there's a dotted line. Is, does that imply a?
Second story.
Bar, barrier?
Second story.
Inside internally, or is it open?
It's a fire firewall.
Okay, it's a firewall.
Yes, and, and, uh, uh, the, the purpose is to kind of, if I threw out a bunch of numbers in the traffic study, the parking calculations, and said, we had, you know, six thousand square feet of this, ten thousand. We, we just wanted to kind of give you a point of reference. So when you look at the numbers, they were crossed.
My, my only concern is um the, the other dotted line for the storage area, for the proposed storage area. Um, I'm just concerned that the fire department's already made sure that that future expanded area ha- already has um sprinklers.
Yes, and.
And it does?
Yeah, and the other dotted line is a fire separation also.
That's, that's also a firewall.
Four, four inches of drive rule, uh, four sheets of drive rule, two, two in each.
Really, the, the only thing is, is that this is um, this is new universe here in, in Massachusetts. And I think that if, if we go beyond our due diligence, we're, we're starting to talk in areas we really can't, can't operate in. And that if your business takes off and goes, goes nuts, we'll, you may not be back here, but this electman will probably ask you to come and visit, and uh.
Put traffic later.
That's the kind, that's the kind of thing. Um, but I'm, I'm very satisfied with, with where you're at.
And that's, my understanding too is, is the process was set up with the host community agreement, so should that happen, there are funds available. Yep, to, to handle that, yeah.
Did you have any other?
Uh, no, the only comment I could make is that traffic study, maybe you might want a peer review, but I, I, I really don't think that, with, with all due respect, I don't think anybody can make good accurate estimate, estimations of something like this. I mean, I, I would see that after you got, well, after you opened, I would imagine that things will ramp up. And then as other dispensaries open, you might ramp down again. And I don't see how any engineer, peer review engineer or proponent could ever hope to come up with that.
Just antidote lead to support that, uh, in, when we opened in Cambridge, we tried to make our best estimates of what numbers of patients that we would see. And we expected it to be something similar, but it's about a fifth of the patients that we see here. So it's very hard to predict.
And that's, the, the, Healthy Farms has been great. We have other clients that we've worked on, and because of the, the robust point of sale system, we can get, plus the doors, we get how often people are coming in and out. And because we've kind of, starting with this project, found a little niche in this industry, we do collect the data and kind of look at it. So we have some, some numbers to kind of say, you know. And this was going back to the medical. I mean, we, we use the specialty retail because there's really nothing better out there. And we overestimate it. Uh, that's part of engineering, is we try and, and, and I think that's where the IT numbers come in, is being so high, is that they said, well, we don't know any any better, so let's go with the really high number, and anything less than that is.
I don't have any questions. It's just like, it's really, it's impossible to predict. It's completely new. Nobody has experience with it.
It, this has nothing to do with their business in particular. It's just that whole interchange. You know, it's been rehabbed. Everybody here uses it, I'm sure, on a daily basis. Credible, fast-moving traffic. Um, you know, with traffic going across, as Tilly pointed out earlier. I was driving there today, and what you really have a problem with is vehicles coming off of ninety-five northbound not yielding.
Correct.
Almost get killed today, literally. Um, the driver came off of the highway northbound, did not even think about yielding. Just came right onto one thirty-three.
Yeah.
And there's no merge lane. You don't know that.
Yeah, almost threw me into.
Yeah, yeah.
Ten wheeler filled with.
Wow.
Yeah, I almost get crushed. But, you know, you know, it's just.
There's a yield sign there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
They should just make it a stop sign.
It should be a stop sign.
Person driving it uh didn't go into your driveway. They continued down the road, but, you know, it's just, that's a problem with a lot of highway egress points, people coming off and not paying attention to the yield. And going right into oncoming.
I, I don't.
It really doesn't.
No, it has nothing to do with them, but I'm just saying that whole interchange needs to be looked at.
So, 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 so to that point, and I don't want to get off track, but, but then the town of Georgetown, um, the town planner should write a letter to Mass DOT and should go on the record stating that that ramp um needs a stop sign, because right now is a yield sign. This is what's happening, and let them know you are now on the record. You now know this issue exists, and then wash your hands of it. But, but that's the only way that stuff gets changed. I, I'm, I'm all set. Uh, so it just seemed like the, the issue that was outstanding uh was the uh traffic, and if we wanted a third party review of that, um, I, I'm okay with, with what exists. Um, I think I heard Harry was okay with what exists.
It's root one.
Bob is okay. So I think that we're okay with what, what you've got there. And so it looks like um we could move forward with a motion.
And there is one provided.
To approve.
Mr. Chairman, if you hear it, uh, move to approve the Healthy Farms Incorporated special permit and site plan applications in accordance with the terms and conditions specified in the attached certificate of vote and special permit approval with conditions dated October tenth, two thousand eighteen.
Motion has been made and has been seconded to approve Healthy Farms special permit site plan application in accordance with terms and conditions specified and attached certificate of vote and special permit approval with conditions dated ten October two thousand eighteen. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Way to go, guys.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
Any word on how the state is moving?
If I drop a mile off before next Tuesday, could they sign with this? Yeah, I heard, I guess it was in the news, they're gonna be thinking.
Yeah, I'm out of town until Tuesday morning, so if you need my help, let me know.
So we have another, we have another agenda item.
Yeah.
Um, coming up, and that's okay. We're gonna go to uh Planning Office, uh Bailey Lane, OSRD.
Good evening. How are you? Not too bad, and you?
Pretty good.
Good. John?
Uh, yes, this um petition before us this evening concerns um the release of a covenant for lots one and two Bartlett Court. Um, that's the two lot court off of Bailey Lane. Um, just to refresh your memory, this particular OSRD, five lots, uh was approved uh early this year in the spring. Progress has moved along very smoothly and rather quickly. Um, Bailey Lane has been um resurfaced. Really looks unbelievable up there compared to uh its original uh photo condition. And Bartley Court has um also been um constructed in accordance with the approved to OSRD plan. What they're looking for, the applicant is looking for this evening, is the actual release of lots one and two. Um, that would be for conveyance purposes. Um, so that uh form is before you this evening. It was included um as an attachment in the staff report, um along with a performance bond slash deposit of money that's on Form I. And they were proposing um a total amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty. As um explained in the comments report for this evening, um they did submit estimates. Um, one from uh Richard Williams, the project engineer. And that had a sum associated with it for as-built plans of six thousand dollars. And then a cost estimate from the Menino Construction Company dated to October eighteen. And that had a, a number of items listed, one through seven. Those are remaining construction items. They had a total cost estimate of thirty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. And then there is a landscape uh cost estimate uh provided by the landscape architect. Um, and that total cost remaining is uh twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. So their estimates um total up equals six thou, uh sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And again, as pointed out in the staff report uh for this evening, uh per section three sixty-five, twenty-seven of um our rules and regulations, subdivision rules and regulations, the estimated cost to complete uh must be doubled. And that comes out with a grand total for this project of outstanding items plus the doubling in cost to ensure the completion of the subdivision of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And um, so what we have this evening for the board's consideration, and please take into consideration, I did state in the staff report uh that we would have the town consultant engineers um look over in agreement with this. That hasn't occurred.
Oh.
Hasn't occurred, but the one thing to take into consideration, um, will probably um complete this subdivision twice, um, with the amount of money they're proposing as a surety. And um, we're also asking for the, or the applicant is asking for the covenant release form to be endorsed. That's where we're at.
So, uh, taking one at a time, um, who signs the form, Jay?
The point Jay would be, um, I would be more, most comfortable if the chairman planning board would sign that by consensus of the planning board.
Um, so with regards to the release of lots uh one and two, anybody have any issues?
I have absolutely no issue as soon as I hear from BSC, that the amount is correct.
Yeah. The amount is correct, but that, isn't that a separate item than releasing lots one and two?
No, I thought it was.
Well, you would want to have surety.
For the remainder completion of the project.
Release. The only thing you have right now is covenant. So you have, you establish surety, then you release.
The surety, though, is established for the remainder of the work to be done.
Exactly.
So this is only the release of two lots. It's not the release of the entire project.
I, I haven't seen that from BSC yet. I don't know what it is, to be honest with you. When BSC reports it, then I'll read the report.
So I, I guess I'm not, what, what is it that you're looking for, for lots one and two to be released? And then there's three, four, and five left, which aren't released.
No, those are released. Those are never part of the covenant.
Those are already out.
Yes.
So these are the last lots to be released for the project?
Yes, the only thing that's bonded is uh Bartlett Court.
Oh.
The rest of the project isn't bonded.
Those are ain't ours.
Yeah, right.
Basically.
And if you saw the site, I mean, Bartlett Court's about a hundred and fifty feet long.
Haven't been down there, sorry.
Walls are built, paved, all the drainage is in. This is probably three times the amount of money that's needed to do it. All I'm looking to do is get the lots released for um building permits. We're not looking to convey them. So listening to Harry's concerns, maybe if we could release them with a proviso that a certificate of occupancy can't be granted until BSC has checked in, would that satisfy your concerns?
I don't know how you legally do that.
I'm sure you can figure it out.
Or if it'll stand.
You could take a vote.
We could take a vote to have world peace, but it doesn't make it happen.
I'm just trying to pull building, I'm just trying to pull, I'm just trying to pull building permits. Nothing, I agree with me more than writing a check for a town consultant that doesn't return phone calls, and then a planning board holding me up because the town consultant doesn't do his job.
When did you submit it?
Last week.
Oh, a week ago.
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't have even gotten it back in time to review it.
It literally, it literally takes ten minutes to review. He has a copy of the contract. He knows the work that's done.
So you have three houses.
You've got the rest of the board.
So that, that's your concern, yeah?
Yeah, we've never, ever released without um verification that the number's record.
We didn't get anything from Larry Graham?
Larry's a consultant, BSC.
BSC.
Yeah, we'll be Dave talking.
Yeah, I mean, we can continue, you know, working towards getting the verification. That's.
Why don't we do that, then?
Yeah, I, I, you know, the board may want to consider um that upon receipt of that verification in writing, that um.
Prove it contingent upon?
Yeah, that endorsement of the chairman would.
Also like sign it.
So vote.
Vote to.
That contingency.
Yeah, and then, then authorize me to sign it, um, based on that contingency. And then we're done with it, and it doesn't have to come back in front of the board again.
Hold on a second.
You know, let's, let's just feel, let's really just be kind of realistic here for a moment. The sixty-seven thousand dollars i- is more than sufficient, and then it's a double of that. So it's not a ten percent contingency, which anybody would worry about. It's a double. So there, there's double the amount of money necessary to complete the subdivision in its entirety. So it's not even, there's no, there's no buffer to worry about. It's.
So I, 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 I tend to agree with you.
You get two full-sized pizzas for the price.
But I, I think, I think, you know, approving a contingent upon BSC's thumbs up would work for everybody.
Yeah.
This is a three-house development.
It's a five.
A total five.
But he's only, he's only putting surety up for the Bartlett Court.
But there's three already up.
Right.
Right.
Uh, that works for me. How about you guys?
Works for me.
Nodding his head.
The best, best part of the work's already done too, so.
Harry, did that work for you?
Yeah, I, I don't know what Dave's gonna do. Uh, what, what, how is it?
Is it working with Dave still?
It is for, for this development.
For this one?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, I've been going out there every week too, you know, where I've been really amazed at. There haven't been any um constituent complaints that haven't been handled directly by the developer. And it has been a tremendous amount of work done out there, and for them to be able to actually achieve everything they've done, and nobody's complaining.
That's great.
It, it shows that their workmanship.
Good site contractor.
Yeah.
Menino's the best.
They really do bend over backwards. And Pete's been out there, and, you know, everything's worked really well. I mean, it's a pretty good deal for the town.
Would you be okay with that?
Yeah, I would be. I would be. I think, I drove by it uh before we got to the meeting. It was a little dark, but I, it looked great. And the houses are big. I didn't expect them.
Improvement compared to what the road condition was.
Huge.
They're small.
They're small.
Yeah, they're like uh twenty-one to twenty-five hundred square feet. They're pretty small compared to what we normally build. Two of them sold. Both to Georgetown residents.
Great.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
So we'd be looking for a, a motion to um approve the uh request for release of lots one and two contingent upon um BSC's author approval of the uh amount of a hundred and thirty-five, six fifty, as surety, some.
Some of.
Do we, do we have the order right there? Should, should the sequence not be accept the, that first and, and then release?
Except which first?
Um, the, the, the surety.
That, that could be the next motion, that is the actual next motion, um.
Okay, okay.
And then, and you know, just for the record, they do have a sum of money here, um, in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, uh, made out to the town of Georgetown.
Yeah, I understand this catch.
Yeah.
It'll catch you. Go clear.
I don't doubt, I don't doubt it for a second.
We've never left a dime on the table in this town.
So you, you okay with that order of motions?
We build everything out.
We'll, we'll do the second one after that.
Yeah, as long as it, it, it lines up and, um.
Is that certified check?
Okay.
Yes.
So do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so the motion has been made and it's been seconded to, uh, approve the request for release of partial lots, of, of lots, uh, one and two, um, contingent upon BSC's review and approval, uh, of the performance bond in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, representing the surety for this project. Uh, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Cool.
So that's unanimous, and then we're looking for, um, a motion, uh, on the surety itself. Can I make one there?
Um.
Second one that you're looking for?
How do we do, how do we do that?
It's written down.
What page is that, John?
Now, that is page two of the comments report. It's the second one down, I move to establish.
I move to establish a survey.
Surety.
Surety, uh, I'm ready for bed.
There it is.
Long day. I move to sta- trying to do this without my glasses on, it's a fool's errand, really. I, I moved, uh, I move establish, to establish a surety in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and no sense, which shall ensure the completion of the Bailey Village OSRD residential development in its entirety, and that said sum has been established in accordance with paragraph three sixty-five dash twenty-seven C of the Georgetown Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land and, and as recommended by the town's consultant engineer.
So we want to change that to, which, which shall be recommended on, in writing, by the town's consultant engineer.
Some has been established in accordance and. And shall what?
And, and shall be, um, recommended on by the town's consultant engineer prior to.
And agreed to.
And, and.
Shall be agreed to, yeah.
And agreed to.
Something like that, yeah.
Prior to the issuance of building permits or.
Building permits.
Building permits, there we go.
I can't pull building permits until lots released, so.
For.
Second.
Lots one and two.
So it's been motioned and seconded, and someone needs to repeat it for the boss.
Can I read it again? I move to establish a surety in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, which shall ensure the completion of the Bailey Village OSRD residential development in its entirety, and that said sum has been established in accordance with paragraph three sixty-five dash twenty-seven C of Georgetown Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land, and shall be agreed to by the town's consultant engineer prior to the issuance of building permits.
Any discussion? So that was, motion was made and seconded, uh, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
John, are we fixing the permit, too?
What's it?
Are we fixing the permit for the, uh, maintenance of, uh, Bailey Road?
I don't have a draft motion, what do, what, what else do we need?
You said you had to take it before the planning board, the, uh, the permit had the HOA taking care of Bailey Lane, opposed to Bartlett Court, the snowplow removal?
Oh, um, correct, um, Bailey Lane, um, was already plowed and maintained by the town, and it's going to continue to do that, um, excuse me about that, Jeff, it's going, the, the, the town's gonna continue to do that for that portion of Bailey Land that is now actually paved and greatly improved, and, um, that has been agreed to by, uh, Peter Durkey, that, that will continue ad infinitum. The decision of the planning board, um, contradicts this in that, um, the applicant in the decision was required to, um, uh, plow, maintain that portion of Bailey Land, when in fact, the decision should have only, uh, mentioned Bartlett Court as being their responsibility.
That's right, yeah, remember that.
So we need to amend that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but you're not paving it before the winter, are you, or are you?
The second coat, no, we won't do the second coat till next year. It's paved now, but it's a binder, it can still be paved.
It's a binder, I, yeah, it wasn't pavement.
Yeah, the issue I have is my HOA documents have to follow the permit, and the permit states that the HOA is responsible for the maintenance of Bailey Lane, so I've got to get that fixed because with, uh, HOA has, the docs have to follow the permit, and the permit was stated incorrectly, it should have stated only Bartlett Court.
What happens if that's town?
How, let's, what do we need to do to amend the permit?
Um, I, I have the document already, I, I could, at the, if the board votes this evening to do so, I could sign that document if the board agrees to that, it wa- it was a snafu, they didn't, they didn't pick it up, I didn't pick it up, and, you know, uh.
It's just amending.
It's just Bailey Lane.
Clarifying what it is.
Remaining as is, the responsibility of the town.
The problem, like, can I ask you questions?
Sure.
Uh, w- well, what happens if by chance, there's some damage from Peter doing it before he paves it?
Yeah.
Who's going to?
That's our problem.
That's, that's what I'm concerned with.
No, that's our problem, it's, it's a binder course, so, I mean, the stuff happens all the time.
Right.
Um, and that's why you try and put your finish coat down, you know, no later than October, so it can harden and you're not running into those issues.
Yeah.
So, it's not a problem.
So, uh, 'cause I did want, I was gonna ask you that one question, that with just the, you know, not having the final course on, you know, there will be issues over the winter then with it, that's.
Why don't we just throw the top coat on?
Yeah, put it on.
Not, not till we're done with the heavy equipment. We've still got foundations to put in, you know, we've got Blue Boy deliveries, we, what, what we, what we try to do is, we try and do the driveways and the top coat together, so there's, there's no, uh, you see?
Same.
So we do everything all at once, um, it looks better ten years from now.
Jeff, is there anywhere where it's in writing that, that if something happens with Peter plowing it, that, that you guys still take care of fixing the?
You want me to send John an email right now?
Yeah, do it.
It wouldn't be a bad idea.
If you want to take that vote, uh, we, and I will send John an official email in the morning that we bear responsibility for the road, um, until such time as, uh, you know, it's complete.
And, and the point of it, 'cause this is, the point of it is, is just that, that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It's, it's a good, it's a fair point.
And it's not a problem.
Okay.
It's not a problem.
So you'll take care of that tomorrow morning?
Yep.
And we'll vote on this tonight? That's fine, I'm fine with that.
And I already have the, uh, document from his attorney relative to, um, taking care of this condition.
So the motion would be to authorize John to, um, amend the permit, um, consistent with current practice of Georgetown Highway taking care of the roads?
Of Bailey Lane.
Of Bailey Lane.
Was that, was that a motion I just made?
Yeah.
I love it.
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and it's been seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Late evening for you folks.
Yeah.
No game tonight, though.
Long day, thank God. That's why you have people here tonight.
You would add something different on the TV.
Right, right.
Take care.
Thank you.
Leave him here, happy.
Everybody left here.
We're done.
We good to go?
We have one, one other.
What's that?
Item real.
You are a taskmaster this evening, John.
Absolutely, it's not official unless you got it.
ZBA did for, um, forward a communication having to do with mellow disposal.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
There is a call to order, um, relative to the CIP committee, um, meeting, um, on three separate Wednesday evenings, um, from, uh, six to seven, and, um, they either need staff or a planning board member, um, to be attending, uh, the CIP meetings. And the CIP committee is primarily made up of, um, department heads, so I, I don't know if the board wants to consider, um, sending me to the CIP meeting or a, um, board member wants to volunteer, but th- these are going to be, um, three successive, um, meetings to take place, six PM to seven PM, um, the next three Wednesday nights.
And the point of those meetings are what, yeah?
Um, to develop capital improvement plans for, um.
The town?
Yeah.
In general?
Yeah, well, it's the wish list of projects to be accomplished.
If we don't have the money to.
If we do, there's the money for it.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same everywhere, though, you know, every, everywhere.
Well, yeah, everybody's gonna have wish lists. When, 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 when do they, when do, when do they need this?
Uh, they, they're gonna, the first meeting is next Wednesday, uh, evening, seventeenth. I told, I told Mike I'd make myself available if the board wanted me to.
When did, when did, when did you find out about this?
Um, late last week.
And their first meeting is Wednesday?
Yeah.
Classic.
Do they have a board at all?
They have a committee, yeah.
How many so?
So does anyone on this board want to go? I do not.
I do not.
I don't either.
I, I, I'll make a motion to, um.
We'll wait before you make your motion, do you want to go?
Oh.
Okay, do you want to go? So here, before you make a motion about authorizing John to go, here's my.
I was gonna condition it, though, I mean, I'm not just.
Oh.
Because I, I'd like to actually see a CIP report, because in, in.
Supposed to be.
Twenty-six years, I have never seen a CIP report.
My concern is John is, is John going in too many directions, that, that's my concern. I'm not saying he is, um, but I just want to be sure that, that, that he's all right. You know, he's got a lot of stuff going on that, you know, with, with other boards.
Can I ask a question? Uh, John, you, you seem to know more about this than, uh, now, are you going to be the, uh, uh, someone participating in this committee, or are you gonna be, um, the one that does all the work on the committee? Because this is FinCom.
Participate, you know, just to.
CIP was, used to be appointed by FinCom. That's how it always was.
And that, it, it is going to be working hand in hand, because these meetings, six to seven, and then it's FinCom right after.
But it has, has to be a resident on that committee. Why did they pull you into it?
It, it actually.
Cause he knows how to type.
Department heads, mostly, I, and I just want to say, I, for at least ten years over the fifteen I was in Hudson, we, there's a much more formal capital improvements program statute, uh, in place in New Hampshire, believe it or not, and they follow it.
Yeah.
Pretty much still a letter and, um, well-structured, and things actually get done.
Good, good.
Um, and money's tight in those, in that location, too, but, um, you know, I was in charge of that for ten years, that, that, the town planner by statute is required to be the organizer for it, I think I can bring something to the table that may help facilitate the actual implementation.
I know you can, that's my concern.
Yeah.
We've got you on the economic development committee, we've got him on the storm drainage, we're working on that.
How many jobs do you have?
And, and, uh, I, I just think you're tied up too much, I agree with.
This is a, this is a quick, I'm not ad- advancing, yeah, pile it on, but this is three, this is three, a three-week commitment.
So it's a three-hour commitment, basically?
Yeah, it's something a planner should be involved in anyway, it's capital improvements for a community, um, you know, helping to facilitate the implementation of such is key for any planner, you know, you, you have to be part of that planning process that actually implements stuff. So I told Mike I'd, I'd help him out with it.
What, what do you think would be, um, what do you think would be a reasonable amount of time that you could commit to it for, for a meeting?
Well, it's a matter of attending the meeting and, you know.
The three meetings.
Yeah.
So is it just attending meetings, or is it as Harry's?